Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the special planning board meeting with Township of West Orange, November 29, 2023, 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start up to 10:30 PM. I ask everybody to rise for a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
For which is stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty and justice.
Please be seated. The next regular planning board meeting will be held December 6, 2023, at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert? Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Present.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Present.
Council President Williams? Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Wicks?
Here.
Chairman Bagoff?
Here. Thank you. Okay, so we have two resolutions before us this evening. The first is PB 23-10, Goddard School Draft Resolution with conditions. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion? Will somebody second the motion? I'm sorry, I make a motion we approve PB 23-10 Goddard School.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody second the motion?
Mr. Guarino?
Second.
Mr. Guarino seconds. On the motion.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Is the president still not here? I texted her. Okay. Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wicks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. PB... Let's see, where's the PB? 21-01 West Orange Plaza, Block 152.01, lots 1445, 1445.01. Draft resolution. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I make a motion that we approve. I'm sorry? Is somebody...
Barry, you gotta get off one of their devices. You're on two. There you go. That's better.
Okay. So PB 21-01 West Orange Plaza, Block 152.01, lots 1445 and 1445.05. Resolution. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I make a motion we approve PB 21-01 West Orange Plaza. Do you have a second?
Doubled.
Mr. Smiraldo seconds. On the motion, Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wicks?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes. Thank you. Diana, would you please swear in our professionals, please?
So we have Ms. Keller in place of Mr. Greigle and Mr. Hess. If you please would each raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth this evening?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Keller, did you respond?
Ms. Keller, say yes, please. We can hear you.
Yes, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry about that.
Outstanding. Thank you. Okay, we have an application before the planning board PB 23-09 Essex County Country Club, Block 156, Lots 1, Zone R2, 350 Mount Pleasant Avenue. The applicant is proposing modifications to an existing improvement and construction of a new accessory building associated with its golf course and other facilities for the applicant.
Lisa John Basta, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're ready to proceed, again, my name is Lisa John Basta with the law firm Kesa Shahinian and Jan Tomasi on behalf of the applicant. As it was stated, the application before you this evening is for site plan approval for minor modifications and improvements to the existing golf course. The existing golf course, as some of you might know, is the oldest in the state of New Jersey and one of the oldest in the country, dating back to 1887. Suffice it to say that it is a well-established golf course within the municipality and has been before this board on multiple occasions for various upgrades to the facility. This application is no different. I'll state from the outset that this is a fully conforming site plan application with no variances. The chair ran through the improvements, so I won't go through that again. But tonight, we have two witnesses. We have John Delmaro, who is the president of the Essex County Country Club, who can speak to the improvements that are proposed and the reasons for those, as well as our civil engineer, who is Paul Calabrese. If it's okay with the chairman, I'd like to call our first witness.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
Mr. Delmaro.
Hey, guys, thanks for your time. Appreciate it. So John Delmaro, the president.
John, just to get you sworn in first, please.
Oh, my apologies.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You can put your name on the record now.
Apologies for that. John Delmaro, the current president of Essex County Country Club, been a member for 18 years and have worked with Lisa and Paul on the improvements and everything that we've got going on at Essex County. And like Lisa said, you know, 125-year-old club, very healthy membership, over 300 members, different classes, and really excited about the opportunity to kind of move forward with the project.
Okay, and John, as the president of the club, you're familiar with the improvements that are proposed tonight and how the club will function?
Yes, very much so.
Okay, there are a few improvements that are proposed. We... One of the things that's proposed in connection with this application is the renovation of the golf course itself. And we've had requested a soil-moving permit for that. So can you explain to the board the reason for those soil-moving activities and the course renovation?
Sure, no problem. So from the second hole through the 18th hole, it's very traditional upgrading of tees and bunkers every 10 to 15 years. You know, sand washes away and you have to improve and redo those. And we hired a golf course architect to help us, you know, make those improvements. The biggest change is on the first hole, where we are changing the hole a bit and creating two different fairways and restructuring the green a bit. And so, you know, the biggest change to the golf courses is on the first hole, but 2 through 18, there are no significant changes. Like I said, we're redoing our tee boxes, we're redoing our bunkers around the greens and then the fairways. And it's, you know, very standard every 10 to 12 years. You have to redo those. And so that's the process that we're going through currently.
And you're also proposing to demolish the existing pro shop and golf cart barn. Can you discuss the need for the demolition if you're going to be constructing a replacement golf cart barn?
Sure. So I don't know if anybody's ever been up to Essex County, but it was built quite a while ago and it's kind of unsafe the way it is and doesn't fit all of the golf carts. And so we need to widen the back part of the entrance road, which there it sits, and move that because we currently can't fit all of our golf carts into the current structure. And so we need to move it to fit the entire fleet of golf carts. In addition to that, you know, we want to go to a full fleet of electric golf carts, where currently we use some gas, some electric. They don't all fit into the structure. And so we want to go to 100% electric fleet, which will all fit in the new structure.
And there's also a proposal for a comfort station. Can you discuss for the board and describe what a comfort station is and what's proposed to be located within the building?
Sure. So on the back nine of the golf course, there are no restroom facilities, which has been a big, you know, point of contention for our members and, you know, especially our women members. And so we would like to install a comfort station, which would include two restrooms and a small kind of grab-and-go snack bar. No seating, quickly grab-and-go your, you know, your snack, your cocktail, or whatever it may be, and move on. And the other big piece of this is that there's no cover on the backside of the golf course. So anytime we get weather, there's really nowhere for anyone to go. So to serve as a safety precaution, we have an overhang that if we do get lightning, if we do get weather, people can stand there and get covered until we can kind of go get them and bring them back to the clubhouse.
Okay, John, just to break down the comfort station a bit further. So the snack bar area itself is approximately 105 square feet. Is that accurate?
I think it's... The snack bar itself is about 180 square feet.
Okay, but it's relatively small in nature.
It's very... There's no seating. It's literally going up to a small window, grabbing whatever it is that you want to grab, and then continue up on the hole and, you know, finish your hole and continue on to the rest of the round.
And food-wise, this is prepackaged goods? There's no kitchen or the like where food would be prepared within this building?
No, it's literally snacks, right? So everything's prepackaged from whether it's a Snickers bar to a bag of potato chips.
And are you currently providing this type of service for grab-and-go elsewhere on the course today?
Yeah, so we currently have a mobile cart that serves it on our 15th tee box, which is right in line of sight of the 16th tee. And so we're trying to get the person who, you know, the person who runs the cart out of that area and into a secure environment. So they're out of, you know, getting a ball hit into them, moving the cart, taking the cart in, taking the cart out. And it's really a big safety concern for us, is that we have young people up there in this mobile cart and trying to get them out of that environment and putting it into a secure enclosed place.
Okay, so essentially the amenities that are already being provided via golf cart are now going to be within a enclosed, safer structure for the person that's manning it and for anybody that's getting a beverage or food from the from the facility. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And was there reasons in particular why the proposed location for the comfort station was chosen?
Because it's out of the line of sight of anybody hitting a golf ball. So you know, it's enclosed, it's off of the fairway, it's not in the sight of somebody hitting a ball. And, you know, we really chose it for safety.
Great, thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, excellent. So we're going to go to the board to Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Ma... Mauro?
Yeah.
Yeah. Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Is Council President Williams here? Not yet, okay. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
None at this time.
I'm sorry, Council President is here. Council President Williams? You're silenced. You're muted?
Here, logging in, we speak.
Hi, thank you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
Not at this time, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
No, I did not.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
Seemed pretty straightforward. No questions at this time, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Smiraldo, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
Not at this time.
Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is Mr. Jensen here? No, great, okay. Ms. Keller, do you have any questions for Mr. Delmaro?
I do not. Thank you.
Mr. Hess, we have your report of October 16, 2023.
And... And November 28 also.
November 28 is the latest.
November 28, okay.
I have one question for Mr. Delmaro.
Yes.
And that's that the proposed comfort station will be set back approximately 50 feet or 58 feet from the southerly property line. And it'll be approximately 145 feet from the nearest existing residential dwelling. So we've asked the applicant to address the board how the location was selected and the anticipated impacts, if any, on the existing residential neighborhood to the south. And we said, we indicated the applicant may wish to consider relocating the comfort station further from the existing residential dwellings. Perhaps you could address that a little bit more detail.
Sure, my pleasure. So it's really a safety concern. We looked at other various locations on the golf course and they're to be honest, just in the line of sight of golf balls getting hit. So the goal of this was to be move the cart out of line of sight of somebody hitting a golf ball. And the fact that this is out of sight, out of line of somebody, you know, hitting a golf ball, teeing it up. And that was our number one, you know, priority is safety for everyone involved.
Mr. Delmaro, just to address another portion of Mr. Hess's question, which is, do you think that in your opinion, that would impact the adjacent property or neighborhood? Do you see this as a facility that's going to be like actively used? Or, you know, it will be light usage? And can you talk about the hours that possibly somebody would be going to the grab-and-go or using the restroom facilities?
Sure. So it'll be open up during golfing hours when golfers are on the golf course. At any given time, there's, you know, four golfers on a hole. So at any given time, we'll have, you know, approximately four people, you know, using the restroom or grabbing a snack. And then one of the biggest, you know, pieces for us is pace of play. And so, you know, no congregation, no hanging out, no, there's no tables, no patio, nowhere to congregate. And so getting people in and out of there as quickly as possible is also a priority for us.
And would you say it's a priority for the golfers as well to move on with their game?
Absolutely, yeah. So, you know, we measure everybody's time and it's imperative to keep the pace of play for everybody behind you to move forward as quickly as possible. And that's, you know, that's the purpose of this is so it doesn't slow down play. You know, it's a safety, you know, it takes the line of sight out of people hitting golf balls and people can kind of go grab your snack and move on.
And so then, based on your presentations and your familiarity with the usage of the club and the golf course, would you say then that this facility would have a very minimal, if any, impact to the adjacent neighborhood?
Personally, I think it would have very minimal impact. I mean, you know, you're talking about maybe three to four minutes of three to four people using a restroom and moving on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Delmaro, is this common for golf courses to have this out in the field? So people do not take a bio break in the woods?
That's exactly the purpose of this, you know.
Okay, so would you say that there are other golf courses in the Township of West Orange that have similar structures with a similar concept that it's outside of the range of a normal golf ball being hit?
Yeah, I mean, you know, off the top of my head, Rock Spring has like, you know, a comfort station slash halfway house. I'm not sure about Crestmont, but Montclair does. So it's very typical and even outside of, you know, the Township of West Orange, most clubs have some sort of facility on the backside for a restroom and facility in a, you know, snack bar.
Right, so this should also not distract the golfers when they're hitting their balls, as to be people standing there or looking for... It's not in the line of sight of the normal golf range course?
That is correct.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Great. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delmaro? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Delmaro on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have a couple. Michaela Bennett, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Is that Ms. Brill?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. My name is Michaela Bennett. I live at 33-35 Old Indian Road. First of all, I'm an objector. And Mr. Bagoff, I would have expected to have been invited on as a panelist so that I could note any objections that I might have to testimony and participate as fully as Ms. John Basta is. So you know, I'm an attorney, admitted to practice in New Jersey. I'm representing myself and my husband's interest since we are abutting the golf course. So I have been raising my hand since the beginning of this proceeding, expecting to be shown, since this special meeting was put down, I was expecting to be shown the level of deference that you've shown other attorneys in town who show up with a retained expert in order to mount an objection. So first, I would hope that you've had panelists.
And I would say that we show you in the same respect that we show every other member of the... Well, when I'm done speaking, you may speak. I gave you that courtesy. Now give me the courtesy, please. We show the same courtesy to every member of the public, an attorney or not. We've had attorneys present themselves. They are not members of our panel. They come in afterwards when I ask for members of the public to identify themselves and who they represent, and they speak for those people. And I offer you that courtesy, you know, three minutes. Please go right ahead.
So Mr. Bagoff, I am not just here as a member of the public. I have a planner, an expert planner, who's here and ready to testify. And I would expect that you're not running the clock. I would expect to be able to ask questions of the experts, but also to be able to put forth my case. I need to be able to establish a record. So far, you've put everybody on the planning board, on the panel. You've put their experts on the panel. I would like to introduce my expert. I would like to be able to make sure that his name is on the record and that I have adequate time as an objector and a super-interested individual who is contiguous to the 14th fairway to be able to mount my objection without the curtailment of three minutes and being treated just like an average member of the public. I am not.
And Ms. McGovern, would you respond?
Yeah, Ms. Bennett, if you had served us with notice that you're actually acting in the capacity of, as an attorney in this case, as opposed to just a neighbor, perhaps arrangements could be made. But you're here now. And if you're going to represent yourself and your husband as an attorney, we're going to need to see you and then we're going to be walking a tightrope here because at some point you'll be testifying and at some point you'll be asking questions. Are you going to actually give testimony tonight?
I expect to be able to ask questions of my planner, my expert planner.
That's fine, and that's fine. But we're not at that point. We put the applicant puts their case in first, just like trial. So if you have questions right now for this witness, Mr. Delmaro, that's all we've done so far.
I believe it's a conflict of interest. I have noted my objection in late October. I let you know I'm an attorney. I let you know that I'm representing my interests pro se, but that I am an attorney and that I will be retaining an expert planner to be presenting. I have provided you and Ms. John Basta with several emails representing my interest. And I resent the fact that you are treating me like an average member of the public when I am an objector. It's not my fault that I'm an objector with a law degree and admitted to practice in New Jersey. But I should be afforded the absolute same deference that you would afford Kevin Malanga when he does the exact same thing in front of your board.
And he's not a panelist when he's representing himself?
Is he permitted to ask questions of the witness?
Absolutely, and you will be too. What the chairman has said to you, Dr. Bagoff has said, now is the time for you to ask questions. So please feel free to ask.
How would I raise an objection on the record to something that say Ms. John Basta is... Let's say Ms. John Basta is offering testimony rather than just soliciting testimony?
Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett, let's stop right there. Ms. John Basta is not offering testimony at this time. We can't, just like any other court, the judge rules. Let's see what happens. At this time, she's not offering testimony? You're saying something that may happen in the future. When something happens in the future, the board chair and the attorney will respond at this moment. Please, please.
As I understand, you are not a court of law. You're a quasi-judicial authority. Now, I may be...
And that gives us, and that gives us the right of a court. Now, Ms. McGovern can attest to that. In any case, the goal is to have your objection brought to the record, to ask questions as opposed to have gymnastics, mental gymnastics here. So let's get you to ask the question of Mr. Delmaro. Let's get you to ask the questions of Mr. Delmaro that you would like. And you have the power.
So thank you so much. And so just preliminarily, again, before asking questions, I would like to know if any member of the planning board is either a member or related to a member of the Essex County Country Club?
That's a fair question. I will ask each member of the board to put on record, are they a member or are they related to a member? I'll go first. I am not a member and I'm not related to a member. Now we're in the past of anybody on the Essex County Country Club. Vice Chairman Wilks?
I am not a member and nor am I a relative of a member.
Okay, Ms. Mayor McCartney?
I am not a member and I'm not related to a member.
Council President Williams?
Member, nor am I related to anyone that's a member.
Mr. Alpert?
Neither.
Okay, Mr. Klein?
I'm not a member and I'm not related to a member of the country club.
Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Chairman. I am not a member nor am I related to a member.
Thank you. Mr. Smiraldo?
Neither to either question.
Mr. Cardoza?
I'm neither a member nor related to one.
Ms. Keller?
I am not a member, no, not related to any members.
Mr. Hess?
Also, I'm not a member or related to any members.
Okay, Ms. McGovern?
I'm not related to anybody and I'm not a member there, no.
Ms. Bennett, you've heard the testimony of the people from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bagoff. I do notice that Mr. Guarino is raising his hands and he's asking to be heard. And I do have a follow-up to that question of the elected officials who are on the board, but...
Mr. Guarino?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm not a member of the golf club, nor am I related to a member of the golf club.
Thank you. I must have missed you. Sorry about that. Okay.
So the only other question that I would ask is a follow-up is, do any of the elected officials who are members of the board receive contributions from any members of the Essex County Country Club?
No, 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 no. That is not a question that's going to be answered here tonight, no.
No, sorry, next. And that's on the record.
Fair enough.
Thank you, next.
No, so, you know, I happen to know the answer to that question, so.
Okay, go on. And you are now acting as an attorney and you're not testifying, so please go ahead and ask the question.
I'm acting as a pro se litigant who happens to be an attorney. And I'm sharing with you the fact that I know the answer to my questions and I'm raising issues of conflict of interest.
Ms. Bennett, you said before for the record that you're an attorney representing your husband. Now you're saying you're pro se representing yourself?
Again, I'm going to repeat myself. I am an attorney, admitted to practice in New Jersey. I am representing the interests of myself and my husband as property owners. I am not representing my husband as an attorney. I am here as a resident of 33-35 Old Indian Road on the 14th fairway, directly impacted by this application. And I'm asking to be heard, period.
Yes.
I just, I have very limited questions for this witness.
Go right ahead.
My first question of this witness is, you raised the issue of safety concerns. Safety concerns for the golfers and people on the golf course. What are, if any, your safety concerns about the neighbors to where you plan to put this comfort station? Can you please stop my time when the witness answers though?
Don't, do not worry about the time. You're asking questions in attorney. I'll take care of the clock.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Bennett, you're asking the safety concerns for the neighbors?
Well, to restate what Mr. Hess said, in three, I think it's three separate memos that Mr. Hess has written in response to your application. He has raised concerns about the location of the comfort station in proximity to residential to residential homeowners.
And this question, Ms. Bennett, was asked and answered already. Mr. Delmaro provided his response to that, that he believes, in his opinion, that there's little to know.
Both of you stop, one at a time. Ms. Bennett, you answered the question. The attorney is representing... Both of you stop, one at a time. Ms. Bennett, you answered the question. The attorney is representing Mr. Del Maro on the golf course. She may answer for him if she so chooses. So Ms. Bennett.
She's not answering for him. She's objecting. She's saying that this is asked and answered. But my question was, did he have safety concerns about any of the neighbors, which was not asked, nor was it answered?
Fair enough. Mr. Del Moro, did you entertain safety concerns for the neighbors?
As it relates to the comfort station or the golf course?
It's unclear.
The golf course. You're talking about hitting the ball and being in the line of that any of the. Homes in the area would be in the line of a golf ball, I guess is what your question is. Is that correct, Ms. Bennett?
I'm concerned specifically about the location of the comfort station. Which is the only time safety was raised as a concern by the witness. And I'm asking the witness, he raised safety concerns for golfers. As the reason for locating the comfort station. Right alongside a residential neighborhood. And I am now asking him. Did he have safety concerns for anyone but the golfers?
Yes, so any of our employees who are working there. And certainly anybody that used, you know, traditionally works on the golf cart that's currently placed on the fifteenth tee box.
Anyone else?
Anyone else, I mean, any, any, you know.
I just want to make sure that I, I've permitted you to exhaust who you're concerned for, who you have safety concerns for.
For anybody on the golf course that is in relation to the comfort station. We wanted to make sure that anybody. Getting, you know, any kind of snack or beverage was out of sight of, line of sight from a golfer. And, you know, safe when they were getting that.
Did you have any concerns for the children in the neighborhood?
Well, the children aren't on the golf, so. I'm not sure what the question is because. I've never seen a child on the golf course.
Fifty feet away from the comfort station is a cul-de-sac filled with children. All along the fourteenth fairway are homes with children. Were you concerned about any of the residential neighbors in your R two zone that we share with you? And your location of a comfort station that is actually serving food and alcohol?
Here again, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but I don't understand how the cul-de-sac is in relation to the golf course.
Okay, let me try differently. So on a golf course. Golf balls are hit. From a tee to a hole, correct?
Correct.
The very basic. And as they're being hit. If a golf ball ended up in a neighbor's property and a child got hit in the head, would you be concerned about that?
Mr. Chair, this is talking about the existence of the golf course itself, which is not the subject of the application. The golf course has existed for over a hundred years in its location. When Ms. Bennett and the other neighbors bought the house. I don't know how this is relevant to the proposed improvements of the comfort station and the, the cart barn that are before the board this evening.
And Mr. Chair, if I might be heard on that. The, the witness is saying he doesn't understand how children in a cul-de-sac and children abutting. A golf course where he has chosen intentionally for the convenience of his golfers. To place a, what he's calling a comfort station. But I might challenge that since it's not simply bathrooms, it's also going to serve food and alcohol. That he's putting it within fifty-eight feet of the closest property line, but certainly within eyesight of seven, eight, twelve, twelve homeowners.
You, you just, well, first of all, you testified. As opposed to asking a question.
Well, I don't, I, I'm trying to.
Why don't you let me, why don't you let me speak as I let?
I'm proffering to the chair why I think it is relevant to give a similar scenario to. A witness and then just liken it to the same concerns when alcohol is being sold and people are.
Now you're adding a third topic. So the first, the first topic was. The drop, the range where a ball could go into somebody's backyard or into a cul-de-sac. So Mr. Del, let's take this and break it down, Ms. Bennett, and we'll have our attorney, Ms. McGovern, see if I have this right. So Mr. Del Moro, have you ever heard of a golf ball being hit into the cul-de-sac? Or impacting any children in that area, which it was a question, that's the first part of that question. The second part of the question would be, so is there alcohol served there presently? And would there be more or less? Or equal amounts of alcohol served now that there is a specific location for the alcohol to be distributed as opposed to a mobile cart? Because we do have mobile carts on the golf course. So those are apparently the two parts of the question that, does anybody on the board disagree with that? If not, I'm going to ask Mr. Del Maro to answer those two questions if he can. Mr. John Basta, does that make sense?
I think there's another aspect to it that Ms. Bennett's getting at, and that is the. Fact that, that the proposal is for a bathroom and for some service of. Snacks and some beverages. And I, in that function, I think, Mr. Doug, Dr. Bagoff, you. Also noted that instead of people urinating out in public, that they would then be inside with that. Is Ms. Bennett, or is, is that what you're getting at? That now? People would not be outside, that, that they would be safely ensconced in a bathroom area so that children wouldn't have to see them?
Did you just ask me that question?
Yeah, is that what you're getting at? The, the fact that that's a benefit to them?
I'm, I'm asking, you're saying that there are people on the golf course urinating in public?
That was one of the things that was suggested as a possibility as to why the comfort station was a good idea. Is that what you're referring to?
Did you, who suggested that? Are you saying?
Dr. Bagoff brought it up as a question and Mr. Del Moro agreed that that was something that, that they wanted to make sure that didn't happen.
I, I'm, I must have missed that, but in any event, I'm asking him simply. As he located. The comfort station. If he considered anyone beyond the people on the golf course.
And one other thing, Ms. Bennett, as we agreed to, you were supposed to turn on your camera so we could see you asking the questions.
My, my, my camera is on. Ms. Brill has disabled my ability to. I, I can be on, I, I would be happy to be on.
I can, I can promote, if you like, I can promote.
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
I can do that.
Thank you.
I'm, the only reason I'm not on. Chairman, is because I have not been permitted to join as a panelist, which is.
Okay, we didn't understand that. We thought, okay, now you're here.
Okay. Okay.
You should be muted.
One second, one second. I see, I see. When I got switched to panelist, I got muted and you should be able to see me now.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, your question is confusing. All right, so you, the, I guess the simple question is. When they picked the place for the comfort station and did they think about the neighbors in the area?
My question is the same. Is the same issue that Mr. Hess raised earlier.
Okay.
In multiple memos, Mr. Hess raised the point of the location of the comfort station. And suggested it was too close to residences. And that it should be relocated to a place, to a location. And I'm asking the witness. If he considered that when he proposed that as the location? I would ask him then subsequently, so let me ask now. If he considered it after Mr. Hess wrote it in his first memo? If he considered it after Mr. Hess wrote it in his second memo? And I believe there was a third memo where he mentions this in each memo. That he recommends. A relocation of the comfort station further away from the residential neighbors. So I, I, I don't know what's confusing about my question. When Mr. Hess raised the same issue. And I'm just trying to find out if the Essex County Country Club, when it did what was. In its, in its mind, best for its golfers and its staff, if they considered what would be best for its neighbors.
Okay, you can answer that again, because I think you answered it before, but go ahead and answer it again.
So yes, we've considered multiple, multiple other locations on the golf course. That's the one that's best suited for the safety of our employees. The safety of golfers and everybody around it. Any other locations in the line of sight of off the tee box and in the line of sight of golfers. You know, definitely understand. Neighbors and we, we take this very seriously and we don't feel that it's going to create any. Havoc or concern or, or, you know. Loud, I mean, it's, it's a very quick. Grab and go environment where there's no seating. There's no patio, there's no struggle. I mean, you literally use the restroom. Get your soda and move on to play the hole.
Thank you. So did you speak with any of the neighbors who happened to be members? The residents that's closest to where you proposed to locate?
I personally have spoken to anyone.
So do you know if anyone? With Essex County Country Club or any of your experts? Do you know if any of them have spoken with any of the neighbors on the fourteenth fairway?
Uh, I, I just, I have not, so I don't know if anybody else has.
Thank you. And so did you discuss with anyone the concerns that Mr. Hess raised? About relocating the comfort station?
Multiple times. I've been out there multiple, multiple times trying to find. You know. Laying out all of our options. I've probably been out there fifteen, twenty times looking at options, different locations. It's set back in kind of a wooded area that is. Kind of surrounded by trees that golf balls don't congregate at. That will be a very quick and amenable way to, you know. Create a safety environment for our employees and the players.
So you said you spoke to multiple people about the location after Mr. Hess raised it. Who did you speak with?
I've personally been out there with our superintendent. Our engineers, you know, looking for all possible locations on the golf course.
The superintendent and the engineers, anyone else?
Uh, other, you know, other. Golfers, other board members of the club, so. I've done my diligence, I've done my diligence on trying to find the correct place. For this, you know, modest sized building to, you know. Like I said, create a, a shelter, a restroom for our, you know. All of our members. It's been a big concern for our women members that they have not had a place on the backside of the golf course. To have a restroom and, you know, trying to. Create an environment that's, you know, healthier and better for, you know, our women members as well as our, our male members.
And male members don't have, don't share the same concern about not having a restroom on the back nine?
Not as, not as much as the women. Because there, there's no restroom on the back.
Yeah, but. It's not a problem for men, but it understood. Okay, I wonder why, but, all right, so, and then I think I asked. But I'm just going to make sure, did I ask you if you spoke with? Any of your members who also happened to reside right where you plan on? Right where you propose to locate the comfort station?
As I mentioned, I personally have not, so.
And no.
I didn't, yeah, I did not speak to any neighbors.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I have anything further.
Thank you. And just to make the record clear, which I think it was a little muddied. That in Mr. Hess's report. Of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, item number seventeen says. The applicant should address the board regarding how the location was selected and anticipated impacts, if any. On the existing residential community to the south. And the applicant may, not should, but may wish to consider relocating the comfort station further from the existing residential dwellings. It was not, as we're setting the record clearly, the word may not, it was not an absolute. I just want that for the record.
And, and just to correct also, you're referring to the October report, but he says the exact same language in the November twenty-eighth report that came out today.
Yes, okay.
And Chairman, was there a third report? I'm sorry. Was there a third report from CME?
We're going to ask Mr. Hess, Mr. Hess, was there the third report?
No, there were only two reports by my office.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hess. Okay. Do any other members of the public have any question? Mr. Del Moro, any other members of the public have any question for Mr. Del Moro? Please raise your hand.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
We have Kevin Malanga. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Rose. Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Malanga.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Mr. Del Moro.
Hello.
Mr. Del Moro, what type of beverage, beverages will be served at this comfort station?
The same that would be in the cart, no more, no less. So soft drinks, water, beer. It's the, it's, you know, in essence. The same exact. Amount of. Drinks, soft drinks and beer that would be in the cart that's currently there.
Are you saying that alcohol beverages will not be served?
No, I did not say that. I said beer, beer, alcoholic beverages, soda, water will be served. In the same manner that it's served currently out of the beverage cart.
Okay, so. Just to clarify, alcoholic beverages will be served?
Yes.
Does your liquor license permit you to dispense alcoholic beverages at more than one location at your golf club?
Yes. As, as we, we currently distribute them out of the current mobile, you know, golf cart that's on the fifteenth tee box.
But how do you know your license permits you to do that?
That's, you know, that's what I was told by our club.
Right, but have you reviewed the license itself? Have you reviewed it?
I talked to our general manager and it was my understanding that we have the ability to serve, because we have a liquor license, we can serve alcohol on the golf course.
You can serve alcohol on the golf course at another fixed location on the golf course? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
What type of lighting is going to be on this comfort station?
I mean. Paul, if I can ask you that, I mean, I don't know if there's any.
We can have your architect answer that question, sir. That, that's fine. And how do you intend to deal with trash that is generated? By the restaurant facility at the comfort station?
Yeah, it's, it's not a restaurant. Like I said, it's a, it's a very small. You know, hut if you want, and we will, you know, distribute the garbage the same way we do with the cart. Pick it up and bring it back to the clubhouse and dispose of it that day.
Do you know what the dictionary definition of a comfort station is?
You know, our. Definition is restrooms and a quick grab and go place, so. You know, so we have places for our women to use the restroom and, you know, get a drink and move on and finish your round.
One final question, sir. The. Other country clubs that you mentioned that have. Comfort stations. Do they serve alcoholic beverages at them?
Yes.
No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malanga. Do any other members of the public have any question for Mr. Del Maro? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have. Lou Pacano. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Lou Pichano. I'm a resident of twenty-nine Old Indian. I'm the uppermost house on the fourteenth fairway. I'm unmuted. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. Probably one of the newest residents in the area. We're sort of happy at the notion of. Owning a property on a quiet golf course from the reasons we purchased the home. As long as we've been talking about history, I should mention briefly, it's. A three hundred year old house that we're trying to keep standing. So older than the golf course by a long way. Probably one of the oldest homes in the county. So we have some skin in the game. Some interesting things are coming up. If you want things formed as questions, I would ask a couple of things. Some interesting things are coming up. If you want things formed as questions, I would ask a couple of things.
Go right ahead.
On what Mr. Malanga just said, a couple of things come up immediately, which had occurred to us before. You did mention you're serving alcohol. This is a concern for us. Also, the word cocktails has been used though, which suggests something more than canned beer for grab and go. Uh, so that is a question. Can we clarify that you're actually talking about serving cocktails at the site? If you want things formed as questions, do I have that correct, Mr. Bygott?
Yes, please. Go right ahead.
When things formed as questions?
Yes, you asked it. That's perfect.
That's one of them.
So yes.
Why don't we answer one question at a time, sir?
Certainly.
So yes, that is correct. In the same manner that they're served out of the current beverage cart that sits on the fifteenth tee box.
Well, the word was cocktails versus canned beer.
No, I I said yes to both. So we have canned beer and, you know, mixed drinks.
And mixed drinks. Yes.
In the same manner that it currently sits on the fifteenth hole, yes.
Okay, um, which gets me to an earlier question from the beginning. You mentioned a grab and go structure with overhang of about a hundred and eighty square feet. I see from your own architectural elevations and drawings a footprint of nearly seven hundred square feet. And the drawings also do clearly outline a patio deck. I can't tell what it's constructed of. I assume it would be a concrete pad. Is that correct?
There there's a little patio there to walk up to, but there's no seating. There's no bar stools. There's literally nowhere to to sit. It's a, you know, go up to a you know, a a counter, get whatever it is that you may be ordering and continue on, finish the golf ball.
Okay, and again, I apologize for the confrontational nature of it, but you did ask me to pose it as questions.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Did you say that a proposed covered entry with a service bar is sufficient to the task of supporting seating at a bar under that covered entry? Again, which is nearly seven hundred square feet.
No, no, it's it's in our best interest to have no seating there. We do not want people congregating there. That is not the purpose of this.
Okay, I've golfed on a lot of courses myself. And although you've mentioned a couple of courses, you know, with a mid-course uh, station, I should just make the note that I've never been on a golf course in several countries around the world which had a mid-station golf course. I'll grant you, I haven't golfed on the the Montclair Country Club. But it looks to me like something more like an auxiliary clubhouse. You also have, uh, again, I have to pose it as a question. I- is it, is it not true that you have on your own drawing a proposed kitchen area and food preparation area with at least two refrigerators? Um, certainly must be electrified therefore. And certainly there would be concerns about storage of alcohol. Let me ask it as a question. Will there be any storage of any food, any alcohol or any refuse on the site overnight?
There will be, um, so yes, there will be, there will be no food. There will be chips, candy bars, things like that. Um, and it will be locked and any beer, soda, water will be secured and locked in that building.
Okay, the question is food however we want to define, but sufficient to the standard of making it a target for someone who would want in the middle of the night to perhaps vandalize or as a prank break into your building. Um, as we already have incursions of people from all over onto your course. This would just give them one more target. I have to word it as a question. Would you agree that having stored alcohol and food on site might be a target for vandals or other schemers?
No, I I wouldn't think so.
You would not agree that?
No.
As to safety, how how is it that you're already, when we pose it as a statement and then ask a question? I would suggest that the uh the trees and other barrier brush and other low vegetation, let's put it that way, especially the trees, provide a level of safety from slices, let's say, off the fourteenth tee, which provide us a certain amount of protection. Um, but it looks like you've already removed many of the trees down there in the area where you want to put this uh station. True?
No, that is not true. There's been trimming and cleaning of natural, like we do every year of of cleaning brush and dead trees and, you know, trimming and stuff like that, but.
Well, we've been hearing and seeing a lot of it. So I mean, I guess we're, we could be talking about what specific locations, but we've been hearing, seeing a lot of it. Okay.
Not, not in that area, no.
Okay, and I I would ask another thing as a question then. Um, given the history, given the geological and geographical history of the area where we are the essentially the headwaters of the Raway River, um, which is your course, essentially my backyard. And what is designated already as a wetlands is really putting the comfort station where you want to put it, the right spot?
Yeah, I think our civil engineer can address the location of the wetlands in proximity to the comfort station. So if we can just defer the question, um, sir, to the next witness, yes.
You mean the civil engineer is not here?
He he will be our next witness, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Time has expired, sir.
My time's expired.
Yes, thank you very much for your questions. We appreciate them.
Sure, I was only on page one.
Thank you. And does any other member of the public have any questions for Mister Del Maro about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have Alexandra Brun. Please state your name and address for the record. Alexandra?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Alexandra Bian. Um, I live on thirty-seven Old Indian Road. Um, my property is located between the proposed comforts, uh, discomfort building and the three sand traps. Um, there are on the golf course near the fourteenth hole. Um, I had a couple of questions. The first question is, um, it were, we were originally, it was originally indicated that there was only going to be beer and then it was expanded that there's going to be mixed cocktails as well in this particular location. Is there anything that would prevent further expansion of other um alcohol in this uh comfort building?
If I could just say for the record that that this facility is is liquor, has a liquor license by the state of New Jersey, which does regulate the sale of alcoholic beverages on the property, so we will be in compliance with those state regulations.
Mr. Bagoff, I object to that assertion. She's testifying and unless she can offer evidence that the liquor license for a clubhouse extends to ancillary buildings and a cart on the golf course, she shouldn't be asserting that on the record.
Ms. Bennett, I can stipulate that as a condition of this approval, if the board is inclined to grant it, that we can demonstrate that the facility, the conversation is uh has a license to sell alcohol per the state of New Jersey.
Okay, so I, if if you, if everyone allow me to finish speaking, um, I do understand that you have a liquor license. Um, but the way that this was presented is, this is just sort of a little segue people to while they wait for their um, hole to open up, or if there's a traffic jam, it's someplace they were can um, utilize the bathroom, maybe get a quick drink. Uh, but the way it is being presented, what I heard um in the testimony was that the use of alcohol is going to can be further expanded, and I wanted to know if there's that that is, if there's anything that would indicate that would not happen.
It would not further be expanded. I think I mentioned before, you know, what we currently serve on the cart is what will be in the building. Nothing.
I I am, I'm not a golfer. I don't know what is sold on these um traveling carts. I just, but my primary concern was the alcohol. And oftentimes when there's a lot of use of alcohol, what that can lead to and the noise that creates. Um, even when people are just sort of hanging out there shortly.
Probably, uh, you're testifying. You may ask a question. This is not time for testifying. We have to be fair to all parties.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was not my intention to testify. It was just, that was my question. The second um question that I had was as relating to food. Um, I was under the impression that this building um possibly had a kitchen. So is it the intention, the gentleman said that it was only for grabbing ghost stuff? Is there going to be prep- food preparation there?
No.
There's no food preparation, so it's just, as you say, chip sandwiches. Is that what we're talking about?
Exactly.
Um, I I'm still not sure if I got a response regarding the alcohol. Is there going to be expansion or no expansion?
I, I think I answered that. I said no expansion.
Okay, all right. And the final question that I have is regarding lighting. I'm sorry if someone answered it or a question. But are the lights going to be off when the golf course is not in use? So when it's nighttime, the golf, all the lights will be off?
That is correct. It's only going to be open during golf course hours.
I'm not saying that the the building is going to be open, but lights, lights if within the building or however for security purposes, will that will up that be off?
Yeah, once that building closes at dusk, every light will be off.
All right. For the time being, those are my three questions for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Del Maro on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any hands yet. Uh, we have Susan Campbell. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ms. John Bossa, you're up.
Oh, I thought there was another.
Yeah, there's another person.
One more.
Hi, Susan Campbell. Has her hand raised?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Susan Campbell. I just joined in, and my concern is rodents. I don't know if anybody addressed that matter. But that's a major concern with rodents, particularly rats.
I I don't think Mister uh Del Maro testified about rodents or rats. Mister Del Maro, do you know anything about that?
It is, we don't have rodents or rats there currently, and there is no intention to have rodents or rats. All garbage will be disposed of every single day, and there will be no garbage exposed outside of the building.
Can you guarantee that?
Me, yeah, I mean, we take the golf course very seriously and take a lot of pride in our golf course. And I will guarantee there will be no garbage left outside of that building at any time.
Thank you. That's my major concern.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful.
And I'm in disagreement with what you're doing totally.
Ms. Campbell, just for the record, can you state your address?
Sorry, I um, I.
It's fine.
That's okay. Uh, Ms. McGovern, we're gonna put that as a condition if we approve.
Susan Campbell's at Thirty-nine Old Indian Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more member of the public.
Yes.
Aldez, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mel Julie Valdez. I live on Elm Street. Um, I would like to know, is this facility going to be equipped with security cameras?
That is the intention, yes.
Okay, I also would like to know, um, what what happens if a golfer is caught peeing outside of this facility if they don't use the bathrooms inside?
Well, that's the intention of the building and the restrooms is to have everyone use the restrooms and not have to pee outside.
I I understand that, but that you didn't answer my question. If someone is caught outside, let's say they've had too many drinks and they are caught outside peeing, what is the consequence for that?
Sure, so, I mean, we have infractions committee, um, and, you know, with public urination. If it's reported to us, we'll address it, go in front of the fractions committee and you know, be dealt through through the board and the infractions committee at the club.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wonderful evening. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mister Del Maro? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any yet. No more hands.
Thank you very much.
Chairman.
Ms. John Bossa, you're up.
Thank you.
Chairman Bagoff, I'm sorry, just.
That's okay.
Is it possible to ask a follow-up question based on something that came up in the questions or no?
Yes, go right ahead. Mister Del Maro, you're back.
Just, I'm sorry, very briefly. So the food that is going to be served will all be grab and go. So no plates, no silverware, no glassware, just paper, disposable.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Del Maro. Thank you very much. Ms. John Bossa, you're up.
Thank you. Our next witness is Paul Calabrese, who is our civil engineer.
And Mr. Calabrese. Where are you? Okay, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Um, Paul, if you can briefly go through your educational and professional background for the board?
I'm sure I have a a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rutgers in nineteen ninety-nine. I am a New Jersey pro- professional engineer licensed since two thousand and four. And I've been a consultant engineer as a professional since two thousand and four, so almost twenty years.
And is your license current?
Yes.
Civil engineering. And have you previously uh testified and been qualified as an expert in civil engineering before other planning boards and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chari asked that he be accepted as an expert in civil engineering.
Thank you. Then remember the board have any questions about Mister Calabrese and Swadir? No, seeing none, we accept Mister Calabrese as a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. Mister Calabrese, you have the floor.
Thank you. And Paul, for the record, you were the preparer of the the site plans and the stormwater report that were submitted to the board in advance at tonight's meeting?
Yes.
Uh, if you can then, for those not familiar, if you could briefly discuss the location, existing conditions of the property?
Sure, we'd love to. Um, so the location is located at three hundred fifty Mount Pleasant Avenue. Uh, the overall property is a hundred seventy-six point eight-three acres. Uh, you know, it's obvious, it's a fully developed golf course, uh, over a hundred years old. And it has a driving range, a practice green, clubhouse, pool house, uh, two in-ground pools, tennis courts. It currently has a uh cardboard pro shop, maintenance buildings and parking areas. Uh, the site is located in the R-two zoning district of uh West Orange. Uh, and we are bounded by Mount Pleasant to the north, Prospect to the east, Old Indian to the south, and the uh Francis Byrne uh golf course, the county course to the west of the site.
And in the R-two zoning district is golf course use, permitted use within that zoning district?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Del Maro previously testified as to golf course upgrades uh, that are being proposed and and soil moving activities. You agree with his testimony that was presented earlier?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and in order to facilitate the soil moving activities, was a soil erosion and sediment control plan prepared?
Yeah, the soil soil erosion and sediment control plan was prepared.
And was that plan submitted to and reviewed by the Hudson Essex Passaic Soil Conservation District?
Yes, it was.
And were any permits issued from the uh Soil Conservation District?
Uh, yes, we we received a soil erosion certification from the Soil District and a general permit for stormwater from the state.
Okay, and um, that was related to to soil moving activities of or or disturbance of approximately twenty or so acres?
Twenty-eight, twenty point one-six acres, yes.
And is it your understanding that the township of Orange has its own soil uh moving ordinance? Uh, and in particular that if you're you're moving more than twelve thousand square feet of soil, um, that you need a soil moving permit?
Yes, we were aware of that.
Okay, and and in connection with this application, the applicant is requesting that that soil permit be granted?
Yes.
And have you had occasion to review the uh soil moving ordinance? And do you believe that uh the plans that were submitted to the board comply with soil moving and will the applicant comply with the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, now, uh, moving on then to the improvements that are proposed. We touched on some of them, but can you describe, uh, let's let's say, starting with the the driveway widening that's proposed and and the parking lot improvements? Can you discuss what's being proposed with this application?
Um, sure, I can. Does anybody want me to pull it up on the screen or or just uh go through it verbally?
I think if you pulled it up on the screen, that'd be very helpful.
Okay, let's see if I can figure this out. I struggled with this before. See, see this, I hope. Hope you see the uh.
Not yet.
And my red dot, okay.
Not yet, no, we don't see uh, we don't see your plan.
Oh, I gotta hit the share button, I apologize, how about now?
There you go.
Okay, I missed, I missed an extra button.
Does this thing could be identified, Mr. Calabrese, or do we have this?
These are, uh, these are, these are just, I just selected four plans out of the planning board submission set, the package. Uh, that that's all I was gonna show up on the board today, nothing new.
Okay, could you identify the plan, please?
Yes, the first plan is sheet three of eighteen, which is the overall location plan.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to show this uh to give more of a frame of reference for everyone, um. You know, because the project really has, you know, in essence, three separate locations from stormwater uh point of view and also for a construction point of view. Um, we have the parking lot improvements here, which will obviously have a closer plan there. Uh, which is uh the improvements to the the parking lot that I'll go into on the next slide. We have the cart storage facility that's gonna replace the old building that Mr. Del Moro brought up. It's good, it's gonna go here, and then we have the uh comfort facility over here, that's that's been discussed as well. Uh, and I just wanted to just show that there's three separate locations for frame of reference for everyone. So now I go to the next sheet, if I can, there we go. And this one is sheet four of eighteen, which is the uh, we call, I call it the site plan, but it's really just the parking area uh site plan. So what the project includes on here is we are demolishing an existing uh structure. Uh, the house, the carts, that was undersized for the carts, and an old pro shop that hasn't been utilized. Uh, for a number of years, uh, the reason for this uh removal of this building is to. Do a better uh first hole setup, uh, as Mr. Del Moro brought up, that the first hole is getting uh some some reshaping. Along uh with the double fairway, and we are relocating the the T area. Uh, from here where the red line is down to here. Along with this, the reason that they wanted to remove this building as well is for safety uh uh concerns. Uh, there's a lot of site issue coming down this entrance driveway, and this is like the main entrance driveway that funnels the people onto the site. And a lot of the golfers, how the operation works is they will come, and this is the driving range for the golf course. They will go from the driving range and then start the round of golf at hole one, and you had to come across the parking area to get there. So what we wanted to do is add a safety uh concern solving, which is to build a cart path. On the existing asphalt, uh, out of pavers that's raised, that shortens and makes this a safer crossing to get to hole one. So that was the, that was one of the items. The other item is we wanted to widen this roadway and open it up for for more uh flow, for more traffic flow. Uh, with this included was making it a wider entrance way, as well as bringing this cart path up along the side. Because this is where the bag storage area currently sits for the facility, so that, so there's a heavy amount of traffic right here. Along with these improvements, we wanted to add, uh, to break up some of the 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 heat island effect, some of the asphalt. And we added these uh bio retention uh areas, essentially, these are just three small. Uh, areas that uh the asphalt is removed, stone and plantings are installed. And the purpose of them is, you know, right now, you know, the rain comes, it, you know, it travels uh to the stormwater facilities. What this does is this captures some of that rainwater and brings it to these three locations. That have plantings that also now now, you know, soak up the water, you know, kind of kind of slows down the runoff. The other things we've added on this plan is a a bag drop off area for guests. Or or for members that have their bags in their car over here to to so that uh they can unload their bags, then pack their car, uh drop, park their car, I apologize. Uh, as well as we widened, we want to widen this entrance way here, because right now it's it's very narrow. To get down to the lower parking area and the pool area, so again, for safety and just for, you know, traffic flow. Uh, we wanted to widen this up, I believe it's uh ten feet, uh, seven and a half feet wide, wider is what we're doing. Uh, the other item that is on this plan that we've added, uh, at 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 the, you know, as as required. Is we have the make ready area for the uh ten uh electric vehicle stations, uh, we we show them over in this corner here. And um. These are the main improvements on this area, the other item that we've added is. We we intend to take the overhead utilities, uh, they're on the utility poles coming in off of Prospect Avenue. Those utilities, uh, you know, P S E and G, Verizon, we're gonna put them underground. Uh, so we have conduit and manholes to put them underground. Uh, as a byproduct of putting them underground, the existing parking lot lighting. Uh, it was P S E and G lighting that really doesn't work once we go underground. So we are going to put in our own lighting, which is gonna be much more energy efficient. Uh, there there'll be LED lighting on sixteen foot poles. Uh, that's gonna use a fraction of the electricity that the, I I I think the metal halide or whatever they they have uh out there now. That's antiquated from P S E and G from numerous years ago.
Paul, while you're on this plan, um, the improvements, with the improvements, are you also, or is the applicant also proposing to restripe the parking area?
Yes, so so what we what we've done here is, uh, you know, we haven't, we've actually decreased. The impervious area overall, about three thousand square feet, but through through the use of, you know, restriping this lot more efficiently. Uh, we were actually able to add, I think it was roughly, I've forgotten, our twenty, was it the third thirty two? Twenty-three spaces, I think.
Thirty-three, I believe.
I apologize, whatever I had in the plan, yeah, thirty, yep, you're right, I'm sorry, you have thirty-three spaces we were able to add. Most of them were from, you know, striping down along here that previously wasn't striped, people did park. But it wasn't striped, so we wanted to make it more official with the with the parking and the striker.
Paul, just just to restate it again, there is no uh additional impervious being proposed with application, in fact, it's. Decreasing per your testimony by approximately three thousand and square feet.
In in this location, in this location, we are adding, we are increasing the impervious with the construction of the cardboard and with the conversation. But in this, this storm, this this location here, this parking area here, uh, there will be a decrease of three thousand square feet. Uh, which does impact how we how we address stormwater.
Okay, uh, and did you also review the two thousand and fourteen resolution of approval? Uh, whereby the board granted a parking variance for the facility?
Yes.
Okay, and and uh, in that approval, there was a parking variance granted to provide two hundred and three parking spaces, is that correct?
That is correct.
And uh, your testimony was that they're increasing the parking spaces by thirty-three spaces, so if I'm doing math correctly, that's two hundred and thirty. Uh, six spaces will be in this area now?
That is correct, yes, uh, including the upper area, you know, it's it's the whole, this areas we're counting as well.
Okay, and um, I I think you said this already, but uh there will be compliance with the township's E V uh electric charging station. Uh, ordinance?
Yep, we will comply with the ordinance and and work with the uh, the the plan board engineer, of course, on our location.
And within the the parking area, there is also, or are there also uh a few bushes and trees that are also proposed to be planted?
Yes, uh, for these improvements, we do need to uh remove three trees. Two of them are pretty much sitting on the building that's coming down, uh, and they're in the way of the widening of this 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 parking area or. To make this turn, and the other tree is sitting here. Uh, which is in the way of widening this for safety, so in lieu of the, so to for these three trees and the added uh parking. Uh, we we were looking to remove the three trees, add seven trees and add in our. By retention area, the twenty-one bushes.
And within this parking area, is any uh lighting proposed?
Yes, we are adding the new LED lighting on sixteen foot poles, um. That's obviously very energy efficient, uh, and it will meet the uh, you know, half foot candle requirements uh for parking.
Thank you, uh, you can move on to the other area of improvement.
Thank you. Um, this is the area, and I can go back to the other sheet if 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 anybody's uh lost somewhere I am. Uh, this is for the cart storage area. Um, so as Mr. Del Moro stated, uh, you know, the the existing cart storage building, you know, i- it's not large enough for the carts. Um, and frankly, even if it was, it did not have the electrical needs uh for the electric fleet. Um, and uh, on top of it, obviously, the cardboard need to be removed for the safety concerns of the new entrance roadway. So this was the location that was uh, we came up with, uh, to build the new facility. Uh, the facility is a pre-engineered uh building, uh steel building. Uh, that will be fourteen foot eleven and three quarter inches uh to comply with the ordinance in height. Uh, it is in the uh, the the golf course wanted to keep this building low. Uh, to kind of minimize the impact uh to the golfers and of course to the neighborhood in general, you know, that our neighboring golf course. And anybody that would see it on Prospect uh Road. Uh, we have uh an entrance uh on one end here, coming in. Uh, and then another entrance coming out here, these entrances tie into an existing uh, I call it a service road, uh, that's here. The building itself uh will include um, uh seventy-two spots for parking. Uh, with the electric that's required for that, we show a a storage area. This is just a a fenced area where they will keep things like, uh, you know, chairs or Christmas decorations, et cetera. We have a small, a single stall bathroom, this small bathroom is for our caddies. Um, the caddies will have a small uh area with like picnic tables, um, under and overhang. So, I guess taking a step back, this is all interior in the building. The roof line then extends the uh additional roughly twelve feet past the roof line, and so this is an outdoor area. So this outdoor area will be, the caddies can congregate to, you know, wait for uh when they're gonna be needed, uh, but they have their own bathroom. Uh, that they can have, and then the other item we have in this plan is an outdoor, this is a uh concrete pad. Uh, slopes down to a grate, and this is for the golf cart washing. So the golf carts come back at night, um, they are washed here. Uh, this washing system is a hundred percent recycled, and as what this uh recycling treatment says it systems for. Uh, it's obviously, you know, sustainability, environmentally friendly, uh, to reuse all the water. It's a hundred percent recycling, uh reuse, uh with the soap, et cetera, um, it goes into the system and and uh. Keeps the carts clean, and then after they're clean, they 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 get put away and charged.
Right, and um, Paul, how far setback is um, the golf cart barn from the nearest property line?
Uh, from the nearest property line, we are setback seventy feet.
Thank you. Okay.
Of course, with this, we we are gonna have, you know, water, uh, you know, we're gonna have utility connections, water, sewer, electric, uh, and probably gas.
Thank you, if you want to move on to the other area of improvements.
Sure, and this is the uh sheet five of eighteen, uh, this one does say the restroom plan, gotta use the word conversation restroom uh interchangeably. Um. And this 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 plan shows the location of the proposed location of the comfort facility. Um, this comfort facility is shown to be at, you know, fifty-eight feet off of the the nearest property line. Uh, the facility itself is, I think it's six hundred, six hundred twenty square feet. You know, of that, most of it's, half of it, roughly half of it's outdoor roof line. And the reason for this outdoor roof area is is the uh for the lighting protection. Um, in the in the facility, we have the men's bathroom, which will have a s- a s- a stall, uh, and and a urinal. And then on the other side, we have what we call a unisex uh bathroom, uh, the reason it's unisex bathroom is because it serves for. Uh, ADA access as well as as for wo- women use, um, because it's it it because we need to have the space for the wheelchair, and we want to keep this building as small as possible. Um, the center, um, you know, we talked about the proposed kitchen area, it will have refrigerators. And you know, it does have a sink, uh, you know, which is required, um, and and that's the only things that we're showing in there, as we discussed. Uh, coming off of the comfort facility, we will be, uh, the intention is uh to bring the utilities. Uh, to tie in, uh, you know, onto Old Indian Road at this point. Uh, these utilities would include electric, uh, water and sewer. And uh, the building is also, uh, I think it's fourteen feet, seven and a half inches is the uh height of this building. Uh, as as we proposed. And um.
And Paul, with respect to the setback, you mentioned that um, the building is setback fifty-eight feet from the nearest property line, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And approximately, how many feet setback is it to the nearest residential building itself?
Uh, about a hundred and forty-five feet.
And um, the requirement of the township code with respect to rear yard. Uh, minimum rear yard property setbacks, do you know what that is?
Uh, yes, it's forty-five feet, and that's this dash line on the plans.
Okay, so the proposal is uh, meeting and exceeding the minimum setback requirement, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you, and then have you also had an opportunity to review Mr. Hess's engineering review letter dated November twenty eighth?
Yes.
And um, can the applicant comply with the comments of Mr. Hess's letter?
Yes, we we will comply with the comments of Mr. Hess's letter.
Thank you, I have no further questions for this witness.
You want me to Dr. Bagoff?
Vice Chairman Williams, do you have any uh?
No, no question.
Sorry, Vice Chairman Wilks, do you have any questions for this witness?
No question.
Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese? Mayor McCartney?
No questions, no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Williams, do you have any questions for this witness?
No questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions?
Um, just a couple, um. Had, was there any thought to uh maybe using solar panels on the roofs, um, especially on the cart barn?
Um, we did not, we did not have any ideas in that, but we could certainly look into it. Uh, in fact, we actually, you know, talked to talk about solar the other day, uh, for other things. But I could definitely, uh, you know, bring that back and and see if that is viable, uh, to to put them on the roof.
With the, um, especially with the electric carts and with the uh reclamation system for the water, it would seem to be a good fit there. Um, I think my other question, and this might have been said and I might have just missed it, on the kitchen area, on the comfort station, is, are there cooking surfaces there or?
There's no, no cooking surfaces.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions for this witness?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, sir, um, when this location was selected, what were the primary reasons or benefits of this location? Compared to any other location on the golf course, one that maybe is further away from the residence? Could you explain why this location was selected?
Sure, I I I believe Mr. Del Maro hit that one up already, but uh the main purpose for the selection was the uh, the safety and. So the safety of the location, uh, the concern of, you know, being in in the line of sight, being in the field of play. Uh, stray golf balls, uh, that that was the the main crux and reason for this location.
Okay, right, and is this building along with the other buildings, are there lightning detectors on these buildings? Both the cart, the barn storage and the comfort station?
I I I I'll be, I I do not know, um, I do know that there is a lightning.
I can answer, hey, Paul, I can answer that, there there is lightning warnings all over the golf course.
Thank you. Alright, and um. Okay, if 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 there are any, let me ask you a question, at this position, is there any other location on the golf course that you can put this that would be more? Contiguous to benefiting the residents and the golf course, because we have to think about the residents too, because they're partners in this.
No, we we really did add, we did look at numerous locations, uh, we went through this very very detailed. And this this came up to be the best location for this site, for this bu- building.
Okay, and I know during the question I'm saying, did did Mr. Moro speak to the, you know, the area residents and people? That have connections to the property and all that, I mean, do you think there was enough of an effort to have conversations or even walk the area? With the residents to give them an idea of where this location was going to be?
I I did not reach out to any residents.
Okay, or can Mr. Del Moro answer that question?
Uh, sure, I'm happy to, uh, like I stated earlier, you know, this is a very, very low traffic area. And we didn't think or see any inconvenience to the neighbors, there will not be, you know. It won't be loud, it won't be high traffic, and did not see any um, any issue with the neighbors. Or any noise or anything like that as related to the building.
Okay, and my my last question is, there will, there will not be any like public address systems connected to this building that would add noise to the area? Like we're making announcements for players and such like that?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese?
No, I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Meraldo, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese?
Just a couple of quick questions, so the comfort station.
Just a couple of quick questions. So the comfort station, you talked about utilities coming in and you said there's gonna be no cooking. Are you putting in any gas? In anticipation, any gas lines in anticipation in the future?
No gas line and, and the electric's gonna be, uh, you know, very, very small, just to support the lighting a- and convenience outlets.
Okay. And I think you testified the, the uh, golf barn's gonna have gas. Is that for heating purposes?
That's for uh, supplemental heating. Uh, you know, you know, we are going still to look at it. I mean, we have a gas line right there, so the thought was for, you know, some low, low heating. Just to keep it, uh, you know, above freezing. Uh, we, we would think to add gas, but our, our MEP engineer hasn't determined if we could do that with the electric. You know, based on the loads yet.
Okay. Uh, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meraldo. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese?
Uh, yes, just a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Um, regarding the uh, where we go on comfort station. Uh, I'd just like to clarify that this will be a staff location, looking at the plans. Uh, as far as grab and go, uh. You know, members are approaching someone that's.
Yes. Yeah, there will be a person in, inside, yes.
Okay, so to that effect, someone is also, uh, you know, monitoring member behavior around the area. Okay. Um, and then regarding the, the parking uh, area, so could you just um. Briefly review the uh, greenery you said you'd be at or, or the, I guess on the um. There were a few spaces where you were adding, adding some green and help. Excuse me, was stormwater runoff?
Yes. So let me show you. So we have, so in the parking area, so we have, right now, this is all asphalt. Uh, this whole area. And what we're doing is we're gonna cut out these pieces of asphalt. Like this here and these two spots here. And uh, we're going to uh, install these buyer retention systems. You know, they don't count for the stormwater. They just count to uh, uh, slow down the uh. The impervious area. Uh, but what they are is they're, they're, they're pretty much stone beds uh, that surround the, the plantings. And in them, what happens is the, the water comes, goes through hole, like holes in the curb, gets into the stone. Uh, and in there, we're gonna have, you know, twenty-one bushes uh, that will be in there to uh, to support the uh, to, to handle the water.
And those will be uh, native?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I don't, yes, we, we picked that, we picked ones that are, that are made up to the area that, that are proper for this use here, because we have to have something that's very hardy. Uh, just because of the heat that's gonna be coming down onto the asphalt. So it's gonna be a pretty hardy uh, product, but yes.
Perfect. Uh, thank you, Mr. Calabrese.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Keller, do you have any questions for Mr. Calabrese?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have uh, two questions. Um. The first question, uh, Mr. Calabrese regarding the location of the comfort station. With where it's located, do you anticipate any impacts that that comfort station would have on the adjoining residential neighborhood?
No, I do not see any impacts in the adjoining this residential neighborhood.
Okay. And second is, since you're not running gas uh, into the comfort station. Will there be electric heat in there or will the uh, facility be winterized at the end of the season every year?
The facility will be winterized at the end of the season.
Thank you. That's standard my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have one question. Would it be possible to put uh, bushes or some type of uh, evergreen? To block the comfort station uh, view from the neighbors?
We, we, we certainly can add additional landscaping uh, behind there, uh, you know, pines or, or bushes, whatever have you. You definitely can do that.
Okay. And would you agree to a condition that no chairs, benches or seating area would ever be on any of the mecanum around this comfort station?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, Ms. Bennett, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Bagoff. Um, okay, uh, Mr. Calabrist. Uh, is it possible to um, enlarge the image on your screen? Just focusing on the comfort station?
I think I could do it one tighter. Hold on. I think I could do one with the, the, with how I set it up. I'm gonna get closer than that.
Terrific. Thank you. That's helpful. Um, I remember I, which, which version of the site plan is this, please?
This is the current version of the site plan.
Okay. Um, you know what? I forgot one preliminary question. You're not a member of Essex County Country Club or related to a member?
No, I am not.
Okay, thank you. So um, um, all right. So I know on the initial version of the site plan, this building was described as a restroom. Is that right?
Yes, uh, yes.
And since then, it's had, I, I don't see now in this picture. Is there a place, can you point to the place where you describe what it is now? Because I've seen it described as a comfort station.
Again, again, as I said, I think we used some interchangeable terms. I do call it a restroom plan in the corner. I do label a comfort station building here. Um, but always the building always showed uh, the, the restrooms on either side and the center area uh, for the food service.
Thank you. All right. So I looked in, I, I, I'm, I, I shouldn't assume you're familiar with West Orange's code, correct?
Uh, I'm, I'm familiar, you know, with the land use code, yes.
Okay. And I didn't find a definition in the land use code for a comfort station or a restroom. I looked for both.
Okay. I, no, I did not look that up, no.
Okay, so I didn't locate one, but I did locate um, definitions for places that sell alcohol. For places that sell food, for places that sell food and alcohol. And for places that sell food and alcohol, but the food is sold quickly, like to go, not on plates. Some, do, are you familiar with those definitions? Say a definition for a bar, the land use definition for a bar?
I, I do not have it in front of me. So I did not read the land use sort of that level for West Orange to know the definitions.
I wonder if I could pull it up or if someone else um, had it available and we could just read it into the record. Because um, I think it's important for, is it possible for me to share screen? Let me see if I can pull this up.
Well, I think you can't share at the same time. So somebody has to pull whoever's.
No problem.
Oh, it's not letting me share screen. Let me see if it will. Sorry about that.
It'd be allowed.
Yeah, it's not permitting me. Do you see? Are you able to see the definitions on the screen?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
And this is now, I see them, so I'm wondering.
I think you have to, you have to minimize them so that they're open on your screen, then hit share screen and then hit it.
Oh yeah, I did that. I wonder if it would be okay if I just read into the record.
What are you reading? Are you reading the definition of something from the code?
Definitions from zoning district regulations setbacks of accessory uses. So let me just find the, let me just, yes, it's from the code. Sorry. I didn't expect to have to go to that, so I apologize.
If you're reading from the code, can you just identify the code section that you're referring to?
Of course, of course. Just bear with me, find what I'm looking for. And you can't see this, correct?
No.
No.
I'm sorry. So it's twenty-five dash four. Let me find the specific definition that I'm looking for. Okay, so twenty-five dash four. Uh. I think it's nine is the first, nine, and then there are, and then it's listed as bar. This is the first. So reading it into the record, bar shall mean a place of business duly licensed. By the alcoholic beverages control board for the sale and on premises consumption of alcoholic beverages. By the drink as the principal or primary use, whether or not food service is also provided. For the purpose of this chapter, a quote bar, end quote, shall also be deemed a quote restaurant. End quote, only if food is prepared, served and consumed on the premises. So if you know, does the comfort station meet the definition that I just read of a bar?
If I can jump in, uh, Mr. Calabrese is not testifying in the capacity as a professional planner. Yes?
Yes, no, no, I want to identify for the record who's speaking.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, he's not testifying in the capacity as a professional planner, so um. I mean, Paul, you can talk as a civil engineer um, in that capacity, but he is not a planner to discuss the interpretations of, of the uses.
Then the answer, then the answer is he, he's not qualified to testify to this. That's okay.
So, Mr. Bagoff, does the applicant plan to offer a planner, a certified planner to testify?
Mr. John Bosla. Okay.
So who do you propose could answer? If this comfort station meets the definition of a bar?
Well, from a legal perspective, it states that the, the sale of the drink is the principal or primary use. Um, I would submit to you that the principal or primary use of this property is a golf course and not a bar that sells alcoholic beverages. And the board's planner can provide their own interpretation.
Understood. So I think that you're parsing the definition. So let me just make sure that I read that section that you um, focused on. So this says. For the sale and on premises consumption of alcohol beverages by the drink as the principal or primary use. Meaning not selling a bottle of liquor, but rather selling a drink as the principal or primary use. So maybe you and I have a difference of.
Bennett, you're, you're, you're now interpreting. You're interpreting. Read it, read it directly the way it is and let the board decide. That's the best.
And, and this board, this board is not gonna interpret anything. The question is, did you, do you know this? And he said he doesn't. And he's not testifying as a planner. So that's.
And Ms. Bennett, just for the record, you're not a, a licensed planner, are you?
I am not a licensed planner, but I would, I, I, I plan to, I plan to um, call a licensed planner as my expert. And I just want to make sure that I get on the record that this building, this comfort station, as we're calling it. Isn't just restrooms. It is also a kitchen with two refrigerators that we have heard. You plan to sell alcohol by the drink and only by the drink, I assume. Not just bottles of alcohol or bottles of wine.
Mr. Chairman, this, at this point in time, it's, it's, I don't mean to be disrespectful, Ms. Bennett, but this is the time for questions of the professional, the civil engineer. That just presented testimony. So I mean, I, I would say for.
Ms. Bennett, I agree with, with uh, Council John Bosla. Please ask questions of the civil engineer.
I agree too, but I'm trying to ask questions of an expert as to whether or not he's the person who drew the site plans.
Okay, now you, you're switching gears. The answer was, he, he doesn't know the ordinance and he's not testifying as a planner. So now you're asking another question, right?
No, I'm not. I was back at the original site plan. I asked why he chose restroom and then changed it to comfort station. And then I asked, would there have been a better depiction via the definition, since comfort station doesn't exist anywhere within the code? I asked if he knew whether it also met the definition of a bar. And then I read into the record, because I can't seem to share my screen with you, the definition of a bar.
And he said he didn't know. So now we're on to the next question.
Okay, very good. Do, do you know what the definition, what the um, code defines as a restaurant?
I, I, I believe this would be the same answer. There would, there would go for planning testimony.
Uh, if you know, do you know how the code defines a restaurant?
I do not have it in front of me. I'm not reading it, no.
Okay. So I'm just going to read into the record and if you can answer this question or not, you know, just let me know. But would this comfort station?
Ms. Bennett, he said he can't answer the question. So that's the end of that. Next.
He said he does not, what I heard him say was, he does not know what the definition is of a restaurant. And I am right now scrolling down.
But he's not here, he's not here to interpret definitions.
I'm not asking him.
He's not here to interpret definitions. He didn't testify to it. He's not here to interpret definitions.
He has ta- he has drawn the site plan. I am trying to get on the record. What the definition is of a bar, what the definition is of a restaurant, and what the definition is of a fast food restaurant. And the reason.
Those things are in the code. Those things are defined in the code specifically.
Yes, and may I make the record?
The record is, you can cite this, uh, um, Ms. McGovern?
He's already testified. He's not testifying as a planner. You have your planner. You can make your record with your planner on your end of the case. So this is n- not really relevant to this witness who's only here as an engineer.
Right. The applicant's engineer has chosen to depict on-site plan that.
Understand, he labeled it comfort station. That's the end of that part of the testimony.
If I might.
Not offering anything further in terms of planning to expertise on that level, which is what you're getting into. So you have your, you have a planner and you want him to testify later. Go for it.
Thank you, Ms. McGovern, but as I said, he is the author of the site plan. In the original site plan, he wrote restrooms. In the subsequent site plan, he wrote comfort station. He could have very easily have written that it was serving alcohol and it was a bar. He could have very easily written that it was serving food and it was a restaurant.
Ms. Bennett, you can't say what he wanted to do or what he could have done. This is what he did. It's objective. Move on, please.
Okay, so I understand why everyone's getting excited, because it, because if it's a bar or there's a lot of objections, both attorneys are. Are interrupting me, not letting me make a record. And so I would just proffer to this board that if it was a bar. If it was a restaurant or if it was a fast food restaurant, it would not be in front of the proper authority right now. That would require a use variance in an R two zone. And I think that's why everyone is trying to avoid me establishing a record about a bar. A place that serves alcohol by the drink, about a restaurant, a place that serves food, and about a fast food restaurant. A place that serves food on the go. But I'll move forward. So, um. How many buildings, if you know, currently exist on the Essex County Country Club property?
I think six, but I could be off. I don't know.
Could we, could we step through them? I, I know of a clubhouse.
Hmm.
A pool house.
Yes.
A cart barn. There's a maintenance building.
Yes, there's three maintenance buildings. Yes, three maintenance buildings. That's how I came to six, yes.
And a pump house. Okay, okay.
And the pump house, right. I did not include that one, yes.
Okay, thank you. How many of those buildings on the country club's property? Are within fifty-eight feet of a property line and a hundred and forty-two feet of a residence? If you know.
I, I, I do not know, on my head, but the uh, I do not know. I'd have to look back at the plan.
Any of them?
I don't believe, I, I don't believe so.
So this comfort station that will be serving alcohol and food will be the first building. On the Essex County Country Club to be that close to a residence. Is that correct?
He said he doesn't know, so you can't pin him down to this. The answer was he doesn't know.
I thought I heard him say, I think so.
Well, I think so, is he doesn't know. The board wants to know, is it yes or no? So if you don't know, sir, say you don't know, as opposed to maybe.
I, I do not know without measuring it.
That's the answer.
Thank you. Is there a way for you to look at the site plan and to determine? If any of the buildings on the Essex County Country Club that currently exist are anywhere close to fifty-eight feet?
But can I just ask what the relevance of this question is? Mr. Calabrese.
Go right ahead. Go right.
Already testified that the proposed comfort station meets the minimum and exceeds the minimum required setbacks for the district. So what is the relevance of existing buildings that are already constructed that are not the subject of this application?
Your bag off, may I answer that question?
Go right ahead.
A comfort station or an ancillary building that doesn't serve alcohol and food and isn't a bar or a restaurant? Has specific setbacks. But a bar or a restaurant. But a bar or a restaurant would have first the need for a use variance and then would have other setbacks.
And Miss Bennett, I agree with you. We would need a use variance if this was a restaurant or a bar. But the testimony, well, we don't have testimony. The board's planner did not characterize this as a use variance. It has come up nowhere. And I would submit from a legal point, point of view, that this is not a restaurant or bar within the definition of the land use code, which is why it wasn't identified by the board's planner.
But you, you don't disagree that it's going to serve alcohol, correct?
Correct. That was the testimony. It will be serving.
And you don't disagree that it's serving alcohol.
I, I, okay, I, I've test, like, I'm not testifying. I'm just repeating the testimony of the prior professionals. It has been asked and answered multiple times that there will be alcohol sales out of this building. If you want to lodge a, a complaint about it, you may do so during your direct.
No, I don't want to lodge. I don't, I don't want to lodge a complaint about it. I want to establish a record about it. I want to establish a record, first through your witnesses, then through my own, that the sale of alcohol changes the definition of this location from a simple restroom to something else. And that the code is very clear, when the sale of alcohol occurs, that minimally, this is a bar or a restaurant. And then, this should not be before this board until it is traveled before the zoning board.
That's your, that's your opinion, and it has been noted on the record. So, if you can please ask the professional questions related to civil engineering testimony, that would be greatly appreciated.
Just for the record, Ms. John Basta, I think you're supposed to be directing your commentary to Mr. Bagoff. And Mr. Bagoff should be who directs me to do.
When I have a problem, I'll raise my hand. I promise.
I understand, but I have a problem with Ms. Bagoff telling me to move on. If you want me to move on, I'll move on. But Ms. Bagoff should just note her objections. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I apologize. Sorry.
It's okay. Okay, Ms. Bennett, you're up.
Thank you. The proposed comfort station, it's the first time the Essex County Country Club wants to build a structure abutting homes within the R2 zone. For the record, if you know, what properties are in the R2 zone that the Essex County Country Club is in? You know how many residents abut the Essex County Country Club?
No, I do not.
Is there a way for you to be able to know how many private residents abut the Essex County Country Club? Could you put, could, could, since I can't share, would you mind pulling up your site?
And his answer was.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This, this is way, way afield. It has nothing to do with this testimony. Next.
It does have to do with the comfort station testimony. I'm asking him how.
Listen, this, this is a land use board, and it has to do with the physical facility. How many people abut it are not part of his testimony? He didn't testify to it. Move on, please.
He testified to the location of the comfort station.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Hess has, has raised concerns about the location and its proximity to residences. I'm about to get into, I, I mean, I can move on, but I'm going to come back to how many residences are impacted by the sewer line, the utility lines, the fact that you're not going to heat a building that's going to have water, the potential for not winterizing properly and us having a, a flood, et cetera. So, if you want me to move on, I can, but I'd just like to know if he understands who's impacted by this comfort station. Okay. Do restrooms typically sell food and alcohol?
Why can't, Chairman, Chairman? Why can't she make her points with her witnesses?
Exactly.
Not making any sense with this guy. He didn't talk about these things. If she's got a witness that will say, oh, I classify this as a restaurant. Golf carts come up, then she can do that in a positive way, not trying to get these guys to admit it.
Okay. Ms. Bennett, he didn't testify as to any number of people. He testified to a structure and a location.
Okay, and I asked him in, in his knowledge as a professional engineer, if he's aware of restrooms that sell alcohol and food.
Mr. Chair, it was testified that this is not just a restroom. The, the architectural plans clearly show what this is. It was labeled a comfort station. That's the vernacular that the golf course uses, with, this is not a restroom that has been established on the record. It, it's a restroom plus a grab and go.
All right, a building with restrooms, the sale of alcohol, and the sale of food.
You've said that uh, over eleven times. I got it. We got it. Okay, move on, please.
Utilities. So, what utilities will be in the comfort station?
We will have uh, electric, water, and sewer.
And the service, uh, forgive me, I, I, I might get the nomenclature wrong. The service amperage to the building?
Has not been sized yet. Uh, my, my, uh, I, I assume when they do size, it'll be less than a hundred, a hundred amps or less for that size, for what we're doing.
And would that be adequate if you determined the need to heat that building? Would that be adequate to service heating?
No, probably, probably depend on how much heat they would need. If it's supplemental heated, it should be, but the intention is not to heat this building. It's winterizing.
Okay, and then, so you said no to gas. There will be no gas run? Any cable or internet?
No.
Phone?
No.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind putting back up on the screen, how, I just want to see how, where you're, I know the original plan didn't show how the sewer and electric would run. And I think that this plan that you just showed did have a, a demarcation of where you were hooking up to Old Indian Road.
Yes.
Is it possible for you to share your screen and just?
Is it popping up now?
Yeah, it's on.
I don't see it.
It's on my screen.
Oh, I switched. Okay, I see it now. I don't know if it's possible for you to make that.
Zoom in that zone short.
Well, I don't know if you'll lose the portion of the.
Oops, did I go too far? Sorry.
That's, I think.
Right here. Sure, there you go.
I think, well, that cuts off the building, though. So, maybe if you go back to where you were, that's probably good enough. It's, it. Okay, so the, would you just, would, the comfort station is in the bottom right corner?
Right here, yep.
All right, and then the sewer line? Are, are you saying that there's going to be essentially like a conduit that runs the electric sewer?
And the water, yes. Yep, it's going to run, to run along the golf course and then come down a, a follow where we already have an existing path, because we already have electric that comes from a utility pole here to here, um, but addition, but the additional electric's required, and that's why we're going to come in and, and pick up another service.
So, as you cross from your golf course property to Old Indian Road, do you need an easement, a right-of-way to get through to Old Indian Road?
No, because the, we have but Old Indian Road.
So, that's your property all the way to the.
Yes, yes.
Oh, got it. Okay.
That's why that location was selected.
Understood. So, so that line that runs from the comfort station down, so is the comfort station is it at a higher elevation than where you connect?
For the sewer, well, for everything, but yes, yes, it is. And that's why the sewer can flow without a pump station.
Okay, and so the sewer without a pump station, it looks like is going to make, well, it's not exactly a right angle. I'm thinking of solid waste flowing downhill and having to make a right angle. Is there is there any concern about a backup or?
No, this is, this is a typ- typical uh, uh, civil engineering design and construction.
To make a right angle?
Yes.
With sewer line?
Yes.
Okay. And did you participate in the choice of the location where you just, where you were going to locate the comfort station?
Yes.
And you said that there were no other possible places for the comfort station to be placed?
This was, this was deemed to be the best location uh, for safety. Yes.
And I guess, um okay, did, um, did you consult um, DEP site maps?
Which ones? Do you mean the uh, which, which site maps you're talking about?
Just any of the Department of Environmental Protection site maps that might depict, you know, areas that should be avoided when it comes to developing or buildings. Okay, which site maps did you um, consult?
Well, we would uh, we would look at the um, I would have to check with, with like my environmental guy, but I believe it's the uh, what's it called? The, not the data miner, but the, the uh, GIS online.
Okay, and were there any concerns when you consulted the DEP site maps?
No, no concerns in this location.
Okay, um, will any trees need to be removed in order?
Yes, we are, we are showing to the removal of two small trees uh, to, to, the, the, the fifth is building here.
So, you need to remove two trees. Okay, uh aside from trees, in order to, I, I'm assuming that, I shouldn't assume, the sewer line, the electric line, and the water line will all be underground?
Yes.
And how deep?
Uh, they, they vary. The sewer is uh, you know, required to be a minimum of twenty.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bennett, Ms. Bennett, this is, this is way out of the, this is going to be all by code. So, move on, please.
I, okay, I just wanted to find out if any.
How deep is going to be by code?
Okay, I'm trying to find out if any roots.
Move on, please.
I'm, I'm trying to find out if any roots will need to be removed in order to locate the sewer, water, and electric.
We, we, we uh, we obviously choose the locations to avoid that, and that's the path that was chosen was to avoid uh, you know, the impacts to the roots and the uh, the trees and bushes, et cetera.
Do you know if any roots will need to be removed?
I do not know all the roots. That would be underground everywhere.
Were the tree removal and the root removals included in this application?
Yes.
You've included two trees? Around the comfort station?
Yes, I did. Yes. Those are in the tree removal permit package.
Are they marked?
It's part of the application submission uh, per the board's checklist, we're required to submit a tree removal permit. One was submitted, however, I, I never understood the reason for submitting it. This, I'm sure it will be submitted uh, if and when um, the board approves this application, we will get the tree removal permits as required by code.
Thank you, Ms. John Basta, but I saw five trees marked around the parking lot, and I thought that this application states five trees are being removed, and I'm now hearing that two trees need to be removed around the comfort station, which by my math is seven trees that need to be removed, and I do not see on this plan any markings identifying trees being removed around the comfort station. Do you, am I incorrect?
Mr. Chairman, can I address that for a second?
Mr. Hess.
Yes, the um for tree removals, golf courses are exempt if, if the area where the tree is located is further than seventy-five feet from the property line, which would be by the clubhouse in the parking lot area. So, those trees being removed by the parking lot are exempt from a tree removal permit requirement.
Thank you.
So, it's only the trees that are within seventy-five feet of a property line that they have to obtain a permit for.
Seventy-five feet.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. I'm just wondering why the plans don't identify the trees that need to be removed by the comfort station, which is fifty-eight feet from a property line.
The, 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 the trees are included uh, uh, you know, in the application package. Uh, I can, of course, uh, you know, during the resolution compliance, add, add the uh, the, the two trees that are to be uh, uh, removed on the actual plan.
But they're not, I, they're not marked, right? I, I'm sorry, again, it's now smaller than I can see on my laptop screen, but just to confirm, they are not marked presently on the site plan around the.
I'll show a demo plan for the um, for the, the uh, comfort station location.
Okay, um, and then track, would you, would you be the appropriate expert to ask about trash and recycling removal?
Ms. Bennett, we don't necessarily have an expert on trash and recycling removal. You can try to ask your question, but I think Mr. Delmore also answered um some of the operational questions on, on trash and recycling.
Uh, I, yeah, I didn't think you would bring in an expert on trash and recycling removal. I just wanted to know if he can answer questions about trash and recycling removal.
Why don't you ask your question and then we can see if he's the appropriate person?
Okay, how will trash and recycling be removed from the comfort station?
Uh, this question, Mr. Delmore did answer. He answered that uh, they would have a maintenance that would remove the trash every day from the comfort station.
I did hear him say it would be removed every day, but I asked, how would it be removed?
That's going to be, uh, Ms. Bennett, that's going to be up to the way the, the, the uh, golf course does it in its routine. We don't have to know exactly how. We'll put a condition that it's going to be removed daily. That's good enough.
Okay, we deal with lots of trash from the golf course, so I just wanted to understand that. Okay. Um, how will the comfort station be accessed in the event of an emergency? Um, it was mentioned that this will be a shelter in the event of storms. And so, in the event of an emergency, how will um the comfort station be reached?
I, I, I think John might have answered better, but I, I believe what the point was is, you know, a lot of people play golf. They do not have golf carts. They are walking. So, the lighting protect, lighting system goes off, you know, they're under there uh, for uh, you know, protection, you know, possibly, I, you know, the, the golf course operations would, would come out with either, with some sort of golf cart and bring those people back to safety of the clubhouse.
Did you say you believe, you, you don't know exactly what?
I, I don't do the operations. I'm just a civil engineer, but I thought I would uh.
That's a hundred percent correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um and then uh, do, if you know, does this comfort station facility need licensing or certification from the West Orange Health Department?
Uh, this, this would be out of this professional's expertise.
If it does, it'll be, that's, that's, that's code enforcement. The code official will speak to the golf club if this is approved, and they'll take care of that. Next.
Thank you. I, I, I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Calber.
Thank you. Do any members?
All this talk about comfort stations, could we take a comfort break?
Yes, absolutely. We're going to take a uh, five-minute comfort break, break.
Thank you.
I'm going to go get a drink in my bathroom.
I'm gonna go get a drink in my bathroom.
Okay, guys, we ready to come back? I guess not.
Everyone's coming in now.
Okay, I'm psyched.
Chairman, could, could I just ask a quick question or should I wait?
Hang on a minute. Please. Okay, we all back? Uh. Okay. Ms. Keller, are you here?
Yes, I am. Please.
Great, okay. Um, in relation to Mr. Greigle, the township planners' report of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Revised November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Is this comfort station considered an accessory structure by you as a planner after hearing all the testimony and reading Mr. Keller's report?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Okay, uh, Ms. Bennett, you had a question?
Well, well, that raises another question. I think that, um, the use is a customary accessory use, but, uh, but I'll leave that until I guess later. Um, yeah, I did have a question. So I know that the plans that have been submitted included architectural plans. And I have questions for the architect, but I. Is there an architect to in, inquire with?
Yeah, we did not intend on calling an architect. The, the plans are. Very self-explanatory and, uh, Mr. Del Maro and both Mr. Calabrese have, uh, gone through. Those plans.
Um, uh, so Chair, I, I'm not sure how.
The, the board will, will take that under consideration. We look at the plans. We have an engineer, uh, we have our township engineer who looked at them. We're a township planner who looked at them.
Understood.
All this information into consideration.
Understood, but there are plans that are being submitted in an application on the record. And if you're submitting. A record, a plan with an architect's, I mean, he's drawn the, he's drawn the, um. He's drawn out the comfort station, but. I, we can't inquire. Uh, they're going to be moved into evidence, but. You don't have the maker of the report to.
Our engineer and our, uh, and our planner have looked at them and. Uh, our engineer feels that's within the code and that everything is, uh, up to snuff. So, and the, uh, the applicant has decided not to provide an architect. So you take that information for what it's worth.
Okay, Ms. Bennett, we'll have to comply with all building code requirements. That's, that's something that all buildings need to comply with. Um, so, uh, other than that, we have a, a permitted use in our opinion. So, uh. We believe that there is no, uh, necessity to call the architect.
Okay, so you, uh, you just said you have a permitted use, but the, but the zones are permitted principal use, permitted accessory use. We just heard, uh, Mr., uh, the chair asked. If it was a accessory use, and as I look at permitted accessory uses. The only one that I see that applies is.
We're, we're not asking you to, to give, give the board your opinion at this time. We have experts to do that.
I'm not trying.
And you're, and you're saying you're not a planner. You're saying you're not a planner, so we're not expecting testimony from you as a planner.
No, I understand, and I understand that you're looking forward to hearing from my planner, but you just asked about accessory building or structure.
And our planner, and our planner gave, and our planner. Gave us her interpretation of the code.
Underst- understood, but the upper person for me to ask questions of whether this is customary, which is. The only way that this would be a permitted accessory use is if it is a customary accessory building or structure would be to ask an architect. I would, but we can, we can go ahead and move on. I mean.
Good, thank you. Do any members of the public have, uh, any question? I'm sorry, we have sort of lost already. Uh, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony?
Yes, we do. We have Kevin Malanga. Please state your name and address to the record.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you again. Uh, Mr. Calabrese, uh, good evening. Could you please describe the vegetative screening? Presently. Between the proposed location of the comfort station. And the property line to the south of the comfort station.
Uh, currently it's a wooded area behind the comfort station going up to the property line.
Oh, okay. What type of woods? Can you describe the vegetation, please?
Trees, uh, uh, is the best I, I could do as civil engineer.
So you don't know what type of trees, shrubs or anything is, is there?
Behind, behind where we're building conversation? No, I do not.
So if one were standing at the proposed location of the comfort station and one was looking south. Would it be possible to see the? Houses that are located to the south of the proposed comfort station?
Certainly, especially when the leaves are up the trees.
And, and what is the height of those trees?
Trees, I, again, I don't remember, but the probably. Twenty-five, thirty-foot trees.
All right, but, uh. I will move on from that. May we turn our attention to the parking lot plans, please, sir? Can you please bring them up onto the screen?
Sure, hold on.
You, you may have to take the timer down.
Oh.
You see it?
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Could you please? Explain to me and to the board, how many planting islands are presently in the parking lot?
How many planting islands are presently in the parking lot? None.
And how many planting islands are proposed for the parking lot?
Three.
Could you please point out where they are with your cursor?
Sure, uh, you see the cursor good?
Yes.
Mr. Planger, this has been done about four times already, sir.
I bet I'm, I'm not clear on the chairman bag of, so I would like to have a clarification. Mister Calabresa, can you please?
Oh, yes, sure. You have the one right here?
Yes.
The cursor, the one here and a very small one here.
Okay. Are you familiar with the township's municipal code section twenty-five dash twelve point one O?
Not top of my head. No, I'm not.
Are you familiar that that section or perhaps any section requires a planting island? For a certain number of. Parking stalls.
I mean, I, I think, I, I believe we comply with code ordinance and, uh, this is an existing parking lot.
So do you have, do you have sections of this parking lot in which there are rows of parking spaces? Greater than twenty spaces without a planting island?
In the row, in the row.
Yes.
I, I believe you have more than twenty spots go straight across here. Yes.
Okay, and, and how about? To the left of where your cursor just was. There's the L-shaped building there. And there's another building with parking lines over what I guess is a, a, a structure that's going to be removed.
Are you looking right here?
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, these are, these will be removed. They are not structures. They're temporary storage, uh, containers that they store, um. Like, uh, chairs, uh, et cetera, in the winter. And they are eliminating those storage containers and putting that storage in the cart barn facility that I showed you that storage area.
Okay, so then that's going to be new parking there. Is that right?
Well, it's already asphalt there. It's just that obviously it'll be new parking because the containers won't be there taking up the spot.
Okay, and would that be a row greater than twenty spaces? In a row without a parking island?
Uh, I believe it's more than twenty spaces that, 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 yes.
And the one directly, the one directly across.
This thing asphalt that's just being repaved.
Okay, and then? The one directly across from that. Is also a row of parking spaces greater than twenty spaces without an island?
Okay.
Is that, is that right?
I believe so, yes, I can count.
All right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the, of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet. Somebody else did have their hand up before. But, oh, here we go. Lou Pacano, please state your name and address for the record. Lou, are you there?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Lou Pachano, twenty-nine, Old Indian. I'm actually speaking for Alan Graham, who's a neighbor on Old Indian Road. I know is very eager to speak. I don't think Alan would mind my saying he is visually impaired and maybe having some trouble. Getting the, uh, raise hand button and unmute working.
Um, what's his name?
Alan Graham. He's on Old Indian Road.
I actually did see his hands up. It just wasn't time for public comment.
Right, okay, um.
If you.
All I can offer on that, because I know he did want to speak, is we can run over there and get him online.
Do any other members of the public have any questions for Mr. Calabrese on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any other hands.
Okay, so we're gonna close that portion of the meeting.
Can I, can I just, um, redirect Mr. Calabrese for, for a moment?
Ms. John, Ms. John Basta, yes, go right ahead.
Um, Mr. Calabrese, uh, based on what, what Mr. Malanga pointed out, if in fact there, there were parking island, um. Going back, let's take a step back. Today you said that, um, the area where the parking spaces are, it's a paved area currently today?
Yes, it's all asphalt currently.
Is there, are there parking stalls? Striped there today?
There are not parking stalls striped down by the pool. It's just asphalt.
To the extent that we need a design waiver or, uh, a variance in order to, uh, not provide the landscaped islands within that area, um. Would we be requesting one or would it be possible to eliminate, uh, a space or two and work with the board's engineer to put additional landscape islands, uh, within those areas?
I, 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 I think, you know, I would prefer the design waiver, uh, you know, obviously, uh, you know, we wanted to add some additional parking and it is already asphalt.
Okay, um.
And of course, of course, we would work with the board's engineer to add what's needed.
Okay, and, um, uh, as was, as you previously testified to, um, the, the, the parking area as a whole, uh, it's, it's. Currently paved and did not have any parking islands. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you are providing some parking islands. So to that extent of, eh, would it be your opinion that you are creating a better condition than what exists in the, uh, asphalt area? Today?
Yes, and we have less impervious area. So yes, we are, we are, we are improving the situation.
Okay, and so to that extent, you are, um, um. Creating a better, uh, condition of the parking fields and, um, it, it would, there'd be no, would it, there be any detriment in your opinion if a, a? Design waiver or a variance was granted?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I just stipulate, uh, um, chairman, that if the board wants additional landscape plantings to be. Placed in this area, uh, the board, uh, the applicant would be amenable to doing that and eliminating a parking space or two. Otherwise. Uh, we believe that the appropriate proofs have been provided for a design waiver or a, a variance in the alternative.
So noted.
Thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Bennett, I think, uh. So Ms. Bennett, I think you're up. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can you say that again? I missed that. You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry, I apologize. Okay, so I'm hoping that Mr. Peter Steck is on the Zoom, Miss.
Yes, I, I see him.
Okay.
This is your expert?
Yes, I would like to call.
Okay, I'm going to promote to panelist right now. You should be coming in.
I have arrived.
I think I have to saw you in. Mr. Stack. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, just for a point of order, having reviewed the prior resolutions related to this application, I did notice that Mr. Stack has testified as in the capacity as a professional planner on behalf of the Essex County Country Club. I just want to put that out there and if, I don't necessarily know if it's appropriate for Mr. Stack to be testifying now for an objector to the application since he was previously, previously the expert for the club.
May I just say that this was a number of years ago and the issue involved was an expansion of the principal building. It did not involve any outbuildings and that was, I'm guessing, ten years ago?
Well, I'll point out for the record for both attorneys and Ms. McGovern that Ms. Bennett made sure that each member of the board had nothing to do with either being a member of the club or in relation to anybody, in relation to anybody in the club. So we now have it on the record that Mr. Stack has testified in some capacity for the club previously. So both sides here, who has been in relation to this club preview.
Thank you, Mr. Bagoff. I would also like to.
Ms. McGovern, do you have any problems with this?
You know, I don't have the resolutions. They weren't provided with the package, so I can't say, but no, I mean, every witness's credibility is always an issue, so Ms. John Basta can cross-examine Mr. Stack in terms, in those terms to explore his allegiance one way or another, and the board can take that as they choose. So right now, no, I, there's nothing to prevent Mr. Stack from proceeding. This has been brought to the board's attention and I'm sure Ms. John Basta will follow up with cross-examination if there's any other information that should come out.
Okay, Mrs. Bennett, just to move things along, unless any member of the board has a question, we are well aware of Mr. Stack's qualifications, his expertise, and again, unless there is an objection, I would recommend that the board agree that he is a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Your license is active, Mr. Stack?
That is correct.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, may I share my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
I have some exhibits that I would like to refer to in my testimony.
Mr. Stack will have to have them labeled by Ms. McGovern, please.
Okay, so how many pages are they?
There are four pages.
And I see you have P one on the top of this first one?
The upper right-hand corners are labeled P one, P two, P three, and P four.
Okay, well, we can go, we can go with those exhibit numbers going forward. You will have to provide to the board secretary, the copies of these documents that are being introduced as exhibits.
I can do it later this evening by email.
Thank you, okay.
So part of my evaluation was to look at the application form. I walked some of the residential properties in the area. I examined the plans and I was here earlier to listen to the testimony. This is, as the board is aware, a very large site, a hundred and seventy-some odd acres. So there is a lot of area to put buildings that might be referenced as, or are referenced as comfort stations on the plans. My focus in reviewing this was on the so-called comfort station. And I note that it is in an area where the trees are not identified. The applicant has said, you know, don't worry, we'll get the proper tree removal permits. We got to remove two trees. But the site plan requirements require you to identify the tree locations in the area and particularly the ones that are going to be removed. Because this facility could, for example, be shifted into a location that doesn't require the removal of trees. And the location of utility lines could be shifted so they don't damage trees that are in the area. So what I would want to point out is that it is normal for a municipality to require the identification of trees on a site plan application that this is. And it would be helpful in judging the merits of this site plan to know where the trees are because this potentially could be shifted to not remove the trees. This has been offered as a comfort station, again, not a defined term, and if you look it up in the dictionary, it's a place with restrooms for the public. That's what everybody thinks it is. As I will indicate, well, first of all, on the page P one, I have a reproduction of the applicant's area map. And I show in detail where the comfort station is. And above that, I have a Google map where I've put in a red dot where approximately the new station is going to be placed. I note that on the other side of the route of the, excuse me, the fourteenth fairway is also a wooded area that in fact already has a paved path. Now presumably it's safe for golfers to run their carts on that path. Because that's why they put the path there and one would wonder, why couldn't a comfort station be placed in that wooded area? Presumably because it's even on the other side of the path, which one would presume is a safe area to travel on. The next page just simply has a colorized version of the applicant's architectural drawings. And again, we, we're not able to question the author of those plans, but I colored in red what is labeled as a kitchen. And it's a, it's a rectangular area that's fairly small. And there's a counter in front, so apparently a golfer can't come in and get anything on their own. There's a door in back, so this apparently is a manned or personed or womaned facility that will need to have an attendant there. So there are at least two refrigerators. There's a space for someone and I'm guessing there's going to be a chair for that individual. They're not going to have to stand there for the whole time, and there is a sink. I colored in blue which are the restroom facilities. So someone reading the plans and saying that there's a comfort station at the fourteenth fairway would presume that there are restrooms. The green area is the covered patio area. And that's an area where people can assemble. And you'll see that the green and red areas greatly exceed the square footage of the blue areas. So it is a misnomer to call this a comfort station. I, I don't want to offend the people that produce alcohol, but probably this should be better referred to as a southern comfort station. That was a joke. So what I would want to suggest is that not only is the app, it has now been indicated that they're going to be mixed drinks here. They're going to, there's going to be beer being served. So these are individual servings, not, you know, I can't buy a six-pack here. It's an individual serving to a customer that presumably would drink that refreshment on the premises in the green area. And again, the green and red areas together greatly exceed what the blue areas are. So I'll address this in a moment, but this is more than a comfort station. The next page has some photographs that I took. Now unfortunately, the applicant didn't identify where the comfort station is going to be except on a blurry aerial photograph. So you, you don't know where the trees are. Is it going to be in an open area? Is it going to be? We don't know. But I took some pictures on November eighteenth of this year. And they, my pictures fairly well depict the condition. So on the upper left-hand side, photograph one shows the fourteenth fairway. So people are, you know, hitting their golf golf balls, if they're decent golfers, from the left-hand corner to kind of the center. I'll note on the right-hand side, I have a Google Earth photograph that labels where the photos are that I'm taking. And, and again, I want to say that, that while, you know, golfers do tend to hit within the fairway, there are sometimes that the balls go outside of the fairway. And on the other side of the fourteenth green is a wooded area that's also outside of the fairway and clearly distant from where residential homes are. Photograph two is a view across the fairway. And that's the wooded area that I'm talking about, and it's a little higher in elevation. So that presumably you, you could still get gravity flow from sewage from that location also. You'll note on the left-hand side is a isolated building in the center of the golf course. So it's not unusual to have a building on the golf course that happens to be out in the open, not in a wooded area, although it presumably a location right across the fourteenth fairway would be, from the point of view of safety, just as acceptable because again, it's even accessed by an existing paved path. So that would seem to be a logical place where someone would drive their cart and, and stop at the station to have a refreshment. The third photograph is of one of the houses that it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. And this is the nature of the vegetation that is at least in part of that setback area. There are tall, predominantly deciduous trees with no low shrubs. So the houses, and particularly this house at eight Margolis Court, is very visible to the, the, the station. The next photograph is P, is P four. And this is an infrared photograph from two thousand and twenty. And this is from the NJDEP Geo website, which gives what they, without a specific delineation, indicates the location of possible wetlands. So I've labeled wetlands, a blue area, that the NJDEP website says is likely located in this area. Now, the applicant is, first of all, according to the regulations in West Orange for a site plan, is supposed to identify wetland areas. There is governmental information that says there's a wetland here. And the applicant has not identified that, has not had a letter of interpretation. And that's required. In fact, the applicant is asking for a waiver of providing wetlands despite the fact that there is evidence from NJDEP that there are wetlands here. So again, this is required information because it, while the comfort station would meet the setback, you have broader authority because this is a site plan. And again, if perchance this comfort, comfort station were switched to the other side of the fairway, it would clearly be outside an area not proximate to any wetlands. So we don't know exactly the dimensions of this wetland. The applicant has asked for a waiver and is ignoring the fact that, that there are wetlands that are probably there. And that's important information from my point of view. As you're aware from this photograph, there are a lot of homes that back up to the golf course in this area. And they have backyards that come close to where this comfort station is proposed. One of the goals of your master plan, of course, is to preserve residential neighborhoods. It also allows obviously golf courses. But it opens the door to a planning principle of buffering uses that might be disruptive. This comfort station is not a residential use. And in my opinion, it is very unusual. There was some testimony on the record, oh, I know of comfort stations and golf courses that, you know, serve refreshments. Well, here we have a comfort station that serves snacks and serves alcoholic beverages by the bottle or by the cocktail and is, has a personnel in it. I would suggest to you that this is highly unusual in terms of comfort stations midway on an eighteen-hole golf course. This is highly unusual. And the applicant has not provided any evidence that this is a typical scenario, this full-blown, again, whatever, a southern comfort station. The, this R-two zone does allow golf courses and golf clubhouse. And the word clubhouse is singular, not plural. As an accessory use, it allows customary accessory building or structure. And what I would suggest, the, the board's planner said, it's accessory. Well, that's a net opinion unless there's any survey that shows how common this kind of thing is. I would suggest it's the burden of the applicant to show that this qualifies as a customary accessory structure. And I would suggest that there's a good chance that this is not customary. It is very rare to have a facility like this that serves alcoholic beverages and snacks and has a person in it. Presumably that person is whatever, over eighteen or twenty-one because they're serving alcoholic beverages to, to, to the public. So although the applicant is saying this is variance-free, first of all, we've recently discovered that there is a variance, but possibly required for green spaces in a, in, in a row of twenty spaces in a parking lot. I would suggest that if this is not a customary accessory use, it triggers a devariance application, which can only be heard by the planning board. Aside from that issue, the, this clearly is eligible for site plan approval. And I don't know how the board can evaluate this without knowing the limits of those wetlands and where the trees are and where the trees that are going to be removed are and where the trees that are going to be compromised by the running of a utility line that to do that, and it has to be again below a freeze line, you're going to be cutting roots of trees. And at a certain point, you're compromising these trees that act as a natural buffer. One of the items of relief that is not related to this station is a parking variance. There's a substantial parking variance being requested, and I presume the applicant has completed their case. We haven't heard one word about the adequacy of parking that's being proposed. So there's zero evidence on that item of relief that's being requested. So let me summarize my planning conclusions. This is more than a comfort station as the dictionary defines it. In fact, the square footage, and I would suggest that the land use impacts greatly exceed what would be a comfort station. And I would also say that this is highly unusual. And the applicant has presented no evidence and nor has the, the board's planner presented any testimony about the frequency found of these kinds of facilities remotely in, in a, in a golf course. This has the potential to have a great impact. If people are backed up, you know, this is described as a, you know, a quick, you know, a stop and go. Does that mean you pick up your drink and you're going to drinking as you're riding in your, your golf court cart? I mean, if you, if you're getting a cocktail, I don't know how you can talk about this being a quick and grab facility. Because presumably you're not going to gulp your cocktails. You're going to drink it over time. You're going to drink your bottle of beer over time and presumably not necessarily while you're driving your cart. So there isn't really a practical issue of people hanging around here. You know, it's, it's backed up, someone's hanging around, has a beer. You know, you play through, I'm going to be here for a couple of rounds to finish my beer. This has a land use impact that's more significant. Under simply the site plan regulations, I think the board has insufficient information to make a reasoned judgment. And that's putting aside whether the use is permitted or not. There may be other locations like on the other side of fairway fourteen, there's already a driving path there. Presumably it's safe because that's why they put it there. There's a wooded area on the other side that is far afield from residential uses and far afield from any kind of wetlands. So one observation is, I don't think the board has enough evidence that's required in your ordinance to have a site plan and for the board to make those discretionary judgments. And number two, there's zero evidence on parking. There's no architect verifying what's on the plans. And number three, this, in my opinion, is not eligible as a customary accessory use. With, and it's the applicant's burden to demonstrate that. And there is no survey, there, there is incidental comments, oh, I know of other places. Well, let's name them. Let's talk about the golf courses and I would love to know another way station that is personed, serves not only beer, but cocktails and snacks that include, again, alcoholic beverages. I don't think the board has enough information. I think the applicant has work to do to demonstrate that this is a permissible accessory use. And that's crucial information because if it cannot be justified as a customary accessory use, this board doesn't have jurisdiction to approve it. So I think that more work needs to be done for the board to, to exercise its discretion, assuming that this would be a permitted accessory use. And that's the end of my testimony.
Just a few follow-up questions. Just a point of clarification, earlier, I didn't want to interrupt you at the time. I think I heard you say that if this requires a D variance, that can only be handled by the planning board. Did you mean the planning board?
Board of Adjustment, only D variance. And if I said planning board, it was in error. It's only the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, thank you. And then if you know, Mr. Malanga raised the issue of a liquor license, the clubhouse liquor license. If you know, can a liquor license for one location be extended to another structure with a person behind a counter serving mixed drinks and other alcoholic beverages? Nearly a two hundred acre property. So on the other
A liquor license has a description of the premises where liquor can be served. It is a mystery at the moment about what the terms of the club's liquor license are. So we don't know at the moment.
Okay. And are you familiar with the definitions of a bar? A fast food restaurant? And a restaurant as the code defines them, municipal code.
I, I am. And the, in my opinion, first of all, this isn't just the comfort station in, in common parlance. But reading the definitions, in my opinion, of the ones that were discussed, this is a bar. There are drinks that are served individually. They're consumed on the premises. Unless the, the applicant is saying everyone will be drinking on their carts as they're moving and not on the premises. I presume they're going to be consuming their alcoholic beverages on the premises here in the open area, either sitting in their carts or standing around.
This, this is John Delmore, the president of the club. So that's just not
Chairman.
You'll have, you'll have time to rebut this. Hang on a minute.
My apologies, first time.
Thank you. The definition of a bar was read in the record. In my opinion, this facility is closest to that definition of a bar.
Thank you. And if, if you know, if this were actually a bar being thinly veiled as a comfort station, would it require a use variance? And would the setbacks be the same?
Well, first of all, it would be, it would require a use variance. And because it's not in permitted in the zone, there is no legislated setback, but the board would have the discretion of establishing a setback for that use, knowing the particularities of the property and the intensity of the use.
And it's entirely possible. Would it be possible for the zoning board of adjustments to deny the use in, in total?
Yes, this requires, you know, five affirmative votes of the Board of Adjustment. And, and if the applicant can't provide proofs that satisfy the requirements for a D variance, the Board of Adjustment could deny the application.
Thank you, Mr. Stack. I have nothing further.
Can I just clarify one thing, Mr. Stack, are you test? Are you stating that if there was no alcohol sale here, if it was just the restrooms and perhaps a water fountain, that this, that there would be no problem with this based upon all of your testimony tonight?
Not completely correct. In, in my opinion, it would, if, if there was just a water fountain in restrooms, it would, in my opinion, be a customary accessory use. But the other issue is there are still site plan considerations. And it still would be, in my opinion, safe and appropriate to put it on the other side of the fourteenth fairway.
Okay. So, so the two issues that you brought up are where this should go. But the other issue was because it's selling, because there's alcohol being provided. If that gets pulled out of the equation, this is absolutely a, a common accessory use on a golf course situation. And it just comes to where the best, best place for this thing should, should be.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one question, Mr. Stack. So a, a little less intense. What if they took out hard alcohol and left beer and soft drinks?
That's still a bar, in my opinion. It, again, it's, 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 in my opinion, now, who knows whether this roving cart has any approvals or is covered by the liquor license? We don't know. It's, 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 it doesn't trigger a site plan when you have a cart moving around. But once you create a building that's serving alcoholic beverages, that's eligible for site plan review. But I, I don't think, I, I, I think the mixed drinks, the cocktails, from a practical point of view, make it more solidly in the bar area, but it's still an area that the state has concern when you sell, sell alcoholic beverages. You don't want minors consuming it and you don't want to encourage, you know, people with being inebriated in public.
So that would, that would be anywhere on the golf course.
Well, it would be anywhere in the golf course, except I think it's more convenient when you have a building that's in the shade, that has a counter you can lean on and chat with your friends and have a beer. If it's, if it's out in the open in a cart, I think there's less of a inclination to hang around. But when you have a formal building, I think there is more of an inclination to hang around.
Even if there's no place to sit, except your golf cart?
Well, you're right. If, if, if there's, if there most, I mean, there are going to be some people walking here, but there's some people that are going to be driving their golf carts. One wonders why you wouldn't do it on the other side of the fairway because there's already a paved golf cart path. But anyway, someone, in my opinion, who has a beer there is very likely just to sit in their golf court and finish the beer.
Okay, so if you, if you took this and put it on the other side where you suggest, and they served beer and they served hard liquor, would that be okay?
I think it would still read a result in a question of whether it's a permitted accessory use. But I would accept, I would expect that my client would not object to that. But it would still, in my opinion, need a D variance.
Okay. And what if this was usual and cut, if they, if the golf course could provide information to the board that this was usual and customary in golf courses throughout the state of New Jersey?
If they could demonstrate it by some kind of a survey, then I might be persuaded differently. But keep in mind, there's a case called Tanis that says that not only do you look at the frequency of the use, but you look at the impact to judge whether it is eligible as an accessory use. Unfortunately, we don't have any hard evidence at the moment.
Pro or con?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Jen Basta, would you like to cross?
Yes, I would, but well, a few things. Mr. Stack, I believe you said that your credentials, you're testifying the capacity as a professional planner. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And you have no degrees in civil engineering? Is that true?
No, I, I have a degree in civil engineering.
You do have a degree in civil engineering?
Yes.
Okay, but that's not your, that's not in the capacity that you're testifying in this evening.
Well, I'm not, I, I'm only testifying as a planner, but I have a degree in civil engineering from Marquette University.
Okay. With respect to the parking, potential parking variance that you identified previously, are, in your opinion, there should be planning testimony with respect to?
There should, it's an item of relief that's in the public notice, and I haven't heard any testimony justifying the relief.
Do you recall that you testified in connection with the Essex County Country Club Planning Board application for an expansion of its, its club and a related parking variance in June, on June fourth, two thousand and fourteen?
I don't recall the specifics, but I know that I did testify. I believe Joe Vino was the attorney at that time. And while I was not a, a parking expert, I did testify on, on the other items of relief that were needed.
And you provided planning proofs in support of a parking variance to allow two hundred and three parking spaces on site?
I don't remember if I testified on parking or there was another traffic expert that testified on parking.
I'll just stipulate for the record, and it was submitted in connection with our application, that there's a resolution of approval from the Planning Board of West Orange memorialized on July second, two thousand and fourteen, in the Mary Essex County Country Club amended preliminary final site plan approval C variance relief. And, and there's recitations in here about Mr. Stack's testimony with respect to a parking variance to allow for two hundred and three parking spaces.
Well, I would have to look at that because it's ten years ago, but the, the, the issue of parking is not pertinent, in my opinion, to the comfort station, which I'm testifying about this evening. It is generally pertinent because ten years ago, at least someone testified about parking relief. And this evening, I haven't heard anyone testify about parking relief.
One minute, Ms. John Basta, do you need five minutes?
I can, I can go with this line of questioning. In connection with the improvements that are proposed tonight with the golf cart barn, as well as what we are terming the conversation, would there be any additional members that are coming to the club as a result of these improvements? Or are they ancillary to the, the club itself?
I didn't study that. I don't know.
Okay, so you have no idea whether it would generate an additional parking need or not?
There's no testimony on the record whether it will or won't, and it's the applicant's burden of proof.
You didn't hear the testimony of Mr. Delmore that this is an amenity for the golfers that are using the course?
Asked and answered. This, this, he answered her question. And he's, he's my expert and I've asked him to come and opine about the comfort station.
I was trying to refresh his recollection on the previous testimony that was given with respect to who would be using this comfort station.
That's fine. You've had, you've had time, you've asked a question many times. We're, we're going to give Ms. John Basta the same courtesy. Go right ahead.
Chairman, she is asking about parking and he didn't offer any evidence about parking.
I'm done with the line of questioning for parking, so I, I'll move on. Mr. Secretary provide that testimony in twenty fourteen. So with respect to the conversation.
I just want to say, I don't know that I provided testimony without looking at my, my files. That was ten years ago. And, and I don't know whether I provided that or not, or whether there was a traffic expert.
Okay. With respect to the, what we're calling comfort station, you made a lot of comments saying that this is not just a comfort station, what a, what an, you know, an average person would think of as a conversation is just restroom facilities. I don't want to misrepresent what you were saying, but is, is that what you?
That's the dictionary definition of a comfort station. It's restroom facilities that are accessible by the public.
Okay. And have you had occasion to review the notice that was provided in advance of tonight's meeting with respect to the application?
You mean the corrected notice?
I mean, the notice that was given in advance of the November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
I, I reviewed the latest notice, yes.
Okay. And if I can read from the notice, did you read that it says construction of a new comfort station slash food and beverage service building, which may serve alcohol consisting of approximately six hundred and twenty square feet?
Yes.
Okay. So would you say that based on that notice? Okay, so would you say that based on that notice, your average person would know what was happening within the building?
The I I'm not, well, the adequacy of the notice um I'm not disputing, and that's a legal issue, not a planning issue. My point is that it doesn't characterize the details of it. Uh, one, uh we that have only become the first notice, I believe the application was put off a month because the first notice did not indicate that alcoholic beverages would be served. Uh I'm not.
If I can stop the incorrect, I we we as the applicant agreed to put off the the hearing to give Ms. Bennett the courtesy of hiring a professional planner.
The first notice did not mention alcoholic beverages. The second one did. But my testimony has nothing to do with the quality of the notice. In my opinion, I'm listening to the record that has been produced and what has been filed, and those are my comments.
But there's no dispute that the average person would know what was occurring within this building based on the notice.
Uh, in my opinion, um, the issue that alcohol would be served is adequately referenced.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I've heard and just to simplify this.
I I have to amend that, but what what is unresolved of of whether it's eligible as an accessory use or not, that's a fact sensitive uh issue, which I don't think has been resolved.
Right, and we do hear you on that, Mr. Stack. Um, so if it is okay with the board, um, what I would ask at at this point in time is that we have other contingencies as it relates to the remainder of the application. If the board were inclined, we would ask that um the board act on um the application, and I'll put out two scenarios. One, that the comfort station be included as far as its location. Um, but we would stipulate unless we come back to the board and demonstrate to you that it is in fact accessory, that we would not be selling uh alcohol or or food within it unless we come back to the board. But we would ask that the application still be approved with a stipulation or a condition of approval that we're not selling alcohol and um alcohol, I think that's the objection, Mr. Stack, alcohol within the building unless we come back.
No, there are two objections. You missed the issue of the placement of the building. We don't know where the wetlands limits are. We don't know where the trees are. The board, in my opinion, has insufficient information to approve this site plan.
Okay, and with respect to the location of the building, are you familiar with what the minimum required rear yard setback is for accessory structures?
Yes.
Can you state what that is?
Forty-five feet.
And what is the distance proposed for this comfort station?
It's a little over fifty feet.
Okay, so then uh in your opinion, is it in compliance with regard to the setback requirements of the township code?
Yes.
Okay, so the board would um in in your opinion, as it relates simply to the setback, uh does the board have any discretion to deny this application because of the setback location?
It has the discretion to relocate the comfort station to an area that requires, in my opinion, less disturbance of trees and further from the wetlands.
But the but the applicant is in compliance with those minimum setback requirements, correct?
I already said that.
Okay, um, and I can state to the board that the that the applicant and the applicant's expert um can come back and testify that the building is not supposed to be placed within any wetlands, and if it was necessary, we could get a letter of interpretation as a condition of approval as well.
Was was that a question? No.
No, I was I was making a statement to the board, not to you.
Chairman, the time for statements and summation is at the end of testimony. I mean, you still have members of the public who would like.
Got it, we got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Ms. John Bosse, are you done?
Yes, I just wanted to help facilitate the proceedings and move them along here that we would that we would agree at this point in time to um.
Ms. Bennett, let Ms. John Bosse finish, please.
But she's she's testifying.
I am modifying the application as it sits on the record today to make it better for, based on your objections, Ms. Bennett. So what I'm stipulating to the board is if they have an issue and they would like to hear additional planning testimony as it relates to the customary nature of having grab and go food sales and the sale of beverages out of this proposed structure that we would come back at.
She either comes back with a planner, we adjourn, she comes back with a planner.
Ms. Bennett, let her finish, please.
Proceeds either. So um I would stipulate that as a condition of approval, if the board were to act on this application this evening, we would stipulate that there would be no um food sales or beverage sales out of the proposed structure. Unless and until we came back to this board and demonstrated with a planner that this is a customary use to the planning board.
Okay, Mr. Hess, I have a question for you. Can we issue a wetlands waiver or based on Mr. Stack's testimony, do they have to better identify the wetlands for this application?
I I think in case of doubt, the board should at a minimum require the applicant to get a uh presence or absence letter.
Okay, so Ms. Bennett, Ms. um John Bosse, Ms. McGovern. The hour is late. We've heard a lot of testimony, and I think there are a lot of uh issues that we need to have clarification on and make better sense of it. Uh I don't want to shortchange the application, uh and I don't want to shortchange the objectors. Um, I'm going to poll the board. Uh it would be my recommendation that we have another meeting uh that we can clear this all up, put everything together, make more sense if the applicant can come back with um better answers, and as Mr. Hess said, uh at least put on the area where the uh wetlands are better delineate them, so I.
Can we do a bifurcation, so to speak, where we carve out the comfort station issue and just here and just do the site plan uh review for the other things, because I think they're somewhat time sensitive.
Yes.
I I don't know a lot about golf, but I know enough that you need time to get the tea things in before they can start golfing in March or April, whenever they start.
I I would say, I would say again, since it seems like the uh the comfort station is the the biggest of contention, um I would ask that the applicant and they have offered to uh add one more um area, uh a island in the parking lot, a a tree, uh bush, island in the parking lot that they identified previously as opposed to having three, now there's four.
Mr. Bagoff, just I I understand what, and and I'm not opposed to this idea, but I know that there are at least six or seven of my neighbors who would like the opportunity, I think, would like the opportunity to um inquire with Mr. Steck. So I don't know if it's possible to just.
No, I I but this Mr. Stack, do you have any problem with bifurcating it, and most of your issues are with the comfort station? Is that correct?
That's not my call. That's my client's call.
I I'm asking you, are your issues in the testimony you provided this evening? It is, there's two sites here. The first, the the major con- point of contention is the comfort station. Is that correct?
That that was my assignment to examine the issues, planning issues, relying relating to the use and placement of the comfort station.
Okay, good. That's what I need to know. So.
Mr. Mr. Bagoff, it I I was trying to not have to go through the testimony again related to the conversation, but if it's necessary to pull the comfort station entirely at this point in time, we can do that and come back at a at a separate hearing because we do have contingencies related to the renovation of the golf course itself, so we would like to
I got.
Get through the application if at all possible this evening.
I'm I I again, as the hour is late, we don't want to shortchange, I'm going to poll the board. So my recommendation would be that we bifurcate the application. Now, Ms. McGovern, can we keep the notice by bifurcating the?
This is what I'm asking, and this is what I'm asking of the applicant. This is, this is the the question. Take the comfort station issue and continue that to a different hearing.
Yes.
And then just decide on the the balance, which would be the golf cart and the parking lot improvements. Um, Ms. John Basta is, would you feel comfortable with continuing just on the um on the comfort station at the next hearing that the board sets it down, continuing your notice? Or do you want to to start from scratch and do a new notice and do the comfort station as a separate and distinct issue?
Yeah, I would.
If we if we keep the comfort, if we keep the conversation as a continuing portion, then the public would have the right to question Mr. Stack. We could move on and we don't have to rehear everything.
That would be acceptable to us.
That'd be more expeditious, and that would.
Bennett, you understand what we're talking about. We would not make a decision tonight. We'd hear more testimony. I I don't know when we'd continue this to the next meeting, which is next week, it's Wednesday, next Wednesday, or the January meeting.
Just for the record, my father-in-law passed away, my mother passed away, and my father passed away. And we have services next week for my father. So I I literally within within less than three months, these three deaths occurred. So I'm not going to be ready by the by by next week to proceed.
January is is fine. We can give more time to miss Bennett.
And we can continue, we can, we can make an announcement that we're going to continue it in our notice so that we can ke- keep the notice um perfected.
Okay, so we're gonna, so my.
So we don't have to rehear everything.
Right, exactly. I think that would serve the public interest and serve the applicant and the objectors.
So I would just say this, though, if there are any public comment about the parking lot and the other thing, what was it, the golf cart?
Cart house.
Okay.
That's what you'd be hearing, but otherwise.
Okay.
So so ju- just because I'm, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
Is it, first of all, is it possible to redirect? I think I have two questions. That's number one.
On the parking lot issue?
Oh, the comfort station.
Yeah, no, no, we're coming back on that.
All right, and then then the other question is um returning on just the comfort station issue. It are you, I'm trying to understand, you're saying that you're going to proceed on this application carving out the comfort station, but not have a new application, is that correct?
Yeah, the testimony will be continued. Everybody who testified under oath about that subject, the board has listened to it, the board will the board continues applications. This is not the first application they've ever had, that it's gone over several weeks. Um, so that they will focus in on that testimony as relates to the issue of the comfort station.
Understood.
Good, okay. Do any members of the board have any problems voting on the uh the car carving out the comfort station and voting on the other portions of the application? Okay, so the conditions that I would proffer would be.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can we just make sure that there's no other members of the public that have questions on the remains on the application?
Do do any members of the public have any co- uh que- any comments on uh anything in this application except the comfort station? Please raise your hand and be identified. We're going to isolate this to everything but the comfort station.
Okay, we have uh Justin Goldman.
Yes.
Justin, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Hi, thank you all very much. Um, you know, I'm I'm here in a personal capacity, but also a member um who was asked to be here on behalf of another uh commission that I serve on, which I'm honored to, and I love this town of West Orange. Um, I did want to ask a question, one. Um, this seems, and I'm 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 no expert on on zoning or planning. Um, but when you're talking about subsidiary or external, you know, carts that sell drinks, I think we can easily look to Prudential Center, which clearly puts all of them out there. I don't know if those are licensed or not. Two, I would like to make the very clear question of when we are public servants, um, we are meant to either be representing towns or representing organizations, and I have seen some members of this committee tonight make very strong facial reactions and emotional reactions and saying, no, we're very tough. Trust me. As a member of the HRC who just had one of those, I just want to say, your job is to be a representative of the town. And thirdly, I would also like to ask, and I have no opinion on this issue whatsoever. But there was a member on this board whom either served, and I'm not sure who me was representing, but walked out of the room during the break and said, I'm going to go have a drink in the bathroom. And then presumably came back. So I would just like to acknowledge that we are all here as members to serve our community. That we are all members to do our due diligence, to listen, to appreciate, to love our entire community. And to understand and 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 Dr. Bagoff, you you just saw you come off unmute right there, but let me finish. If you are, if you are here to have your own opinions, that is not what we are meant to do. We are meant to serve and serve our communities. And I know all of my elected officials, all of my representatives on this community will agree with that statement, that we want nothing but the best for this township. And when we have hard issues that present themselves to us, we must do our best, and I'm the youngest person on this call. We will do them in a diligence that is respectful and knowledgeable of our community. So when I see members on this board say, I'm going to go drink in the bathroom, and I see members of this board who roll their eyes at public commentary, or I see people whom I have voted for and whom I love make commentary or expressions that are not appropriate. It 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 painfully serves me and some of them whom I serve with in public capacities. Again, I don't care personally about this issue enough to have any insight on this. My commentary right now is on the discourse of what I've seen through this meeting. So that is my commentary tonight, and I've waited three hours to say that, because I've never once been in a meeting where I have heard somebody say, I'm going to go take a drink in the bathroom. And then that being an acceptable governmental meeting. So that is my opinion on this meeting tonight. And I wish you all nothing but the best. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I love you all, and I love this township, and I wish.
We appreciate that. Have a wonderful evening. Are there any other public comments about the parking area or the golf carts? Please raise, you're going to be identified.
Yes, we have Kevin Malanga.
Thank you, Ms. Brill.
Seems to be something wrong with the clock. I don't know what um what's happened to it. I'm going to try to run it again.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Malanga.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comment is simply about the islands in the parking lot. The islands should be constructed in accordance with the township's code. Uh, the expert, Mr. Calabrese, he said one or two islands, not simply one island, but it should go further. The parking lot should be in compliance with the municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. Do any of the members of the public have any comments about the parking lot or the golf cart area?
I'm not seeing any yet.
Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll close that portion of the meeting. So um Ms. Keller, so the parking lot is pre-existing non-conforming. Just because it wasn't striped doesn't make it an area that it wasn't that people did not park, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so eh uh making this something, then I I um Ms. John Bosse, you're not adding any new McCannum, any new asphalt, is that correct?
Correct, we're actually decreasing the impervious from what exists today. I believe the test plane was by about three thousand square feet.
Okay, so I would uh my recommendation, vote on whatever you want, it. Okay, so I would, uh, my recommendation, you vote on whatever you want, and and another, I recommend we, they're adding three areas. I did another island in the parking lot, as was proffered previously, and I think that would be uh a good midway uh, no, no cheers, I'm still, uh, screening on the back of the, uh, that's the only condition that I would recommend.
There was one other condition. The other condition, the other condition was we'll comply with the township ordinance regarding soil moving requirement.
Yes, soil erosion, yes, absolutely. Okay. Does any other member of the board have any conditions or questions or comments? Seeing none.
Oh, one other um
Yes.
Condition may be, uh, we'll comply with the comments set forth in Mr. Hess's letter dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, with the exception of any um references to the conference station.
Yes. I'm just looking over my nose.
So it'd be a total of four parking lot islands?
Uh, three of them, as I recall from the planner on.
One additional.
It's one additional island, correct?
And one additional island uh to the parking lot to bring it to a total of four. All right.
And the plantings will be not invasive and in accordan, and and in accordance with the uh town forester.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, one thing before we finish, for the planning board members, I would just like to remind you, please, to uh do your stormwater management course. I know you love hearing that from me. It's a good course. Okay, and okay, having said that, I make a motion that we approve PB twenty-three dash oh-nine, the bifurcated portion of the yeah, application, Essex County Country Club, block one fifty-six, lot one, zone R two, three fifty, Mount Pleasant Avenue for the parking structure in the golf cart area with uh conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Klein, seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Albert? Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Is there where you know?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mrs. Marado?
Yes.
Master President Williams?
Yes.
Lady McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Chairman Barrie?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Thank you to all.
One more thing you have to say on the record is that the comfort station issue, uh, the comfort station part of this application will be carried to the first regular meeting in January, which I believe, I'm trying to look up, is January third? Is that the date?
January third, two thousand twenty-four via Zoom.
We confirm with Mr. Steck that he's available on that date?
Well, that's when it's, we have to do it tonight. We have to, we have to announce a date, so we're going to say that, and if there's a problem that comes up, um hopefully we figure that out.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
January, which day? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm trying to find that on my calendar.
January third.
Twenty twenty-four.
January third, Wednesday, January third, two thousand twenty-four, okay, at seven thirty via Zoom.
And the Zoom instructions, just for the public, they would be posted on the township website, or you could call the planning board secretary for that information?
Yes.
And and the township bulletin board and the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. And the next regular meeting of the planning board will be held Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Green, I second it. All in favor?
Hi.
I'll oppose. The eyes are above the nose. Thank you all very much.
See you on Wednesday.
Thank you.
See you next week.
See you next week.
Have a good night.
Uy, se me apuesta stupides.
Happy day to you.
Hey, good night, everybody.